Good evening. It is 6:01 PM calling to session, regular city council meeting for July 21st, 2020 for the city of Sunset Valley, Texas. And we have a full agenda tonight, and I imagine from now leading up to the election, we will probably have full agendas every night. Council members, please remember at 9:00 PM, I will be looking for a motion and action from council if you all want to extend the meeting from 9:00 to 10:00, but we will not extend past 10:00. And so with that, we will jump into the citizen comments.
I see Richard Hayes has his hand up.
Yes, so I guess that means I get to talk first?
No, actually, hold on just one second. Yes, so for anybody who's wanting to speak during citizen comments, if you would please raise your hand, so Richard, if you would raise your hand so that I can... I didn't see it. Okay, there, I see it now. It disappeared again. Richard, you have the floor. You have four minutes.
Okay. I'm Richard Hayes. I live at 42 Lone Oak Trail, right across the street from the city-owned property at 37 Lone Oak. I understand you guys have a lot to deal with tonight, so I don't want to take too much of your time. I know this is difficult times. You've got a lot on your plate, but I do appreciate your willingness to consider addressing our issues with the use of this property. I'd like to make a few comments on the issue that I think is going to come up in the staff report. As I noted in a letter that I sent to the city on May 19th and to all the council members a couple of weeks ago, we've asked the city to eliminate parking for trail access on Lone Oak Trail. When this property was purchased and developed by the city, it was done with the agreement of the citizens and later with the agreement of the Lone Oak Ad Hoc Committee made up of citizens. And I would like to remind everyone of what that agreement said in part. It's a fairly long document, but there are several pieces of it. One thing was the overriding consideration throughout the entire deliberations of the committee was that the city council required us that the property be used for no use other than the existing use, which was single-family, or a use that does not increase density, noise, or traffic flow above single-family residential use. The other thing that the committee said as a part of their report, which was adopted by the city council in the city council meeting, I think that was 2007. "The Lone Oak Ad Hoc Committee does not want this to become the location of a trailhead as such. There should be no provision for parking associated with trail use at this property or on the Lone Oak Trail right away adjacent to the property." There was a lot of other stuff in there, no lights, no restrooms. We really didn't want anybody using it other than citizens, but we knew we couldn't really make that requirement. Very simply, I just want the city council to uphold the commitment that was made to me and my neighbors when the city purchased that property. And I know, in some sense, the cat's out of the bag. In COVID times, we've seen greatly increased use of that property, and that's why this has become a more pressing issue. On July 16th, I sent an email to the chief and the city administrator in response to a suggestion that we use parking permits to solve this problem. We had gone back and forth on a number of things, including the use of a sign to eliminate parking there. And my... Part of my letter stated, "Before we head down this path," and I was talking about parking permits, "I would like to know if either of you see any legal issues with signage that states," in quotes, "no parking for trail access." And we had talked about this several times before, but I've never gotten a clear answer on whether that was legally enforceable. I said, "I understand the enforcement issues, but what I'm asking is, is there any legal reason we could not implement such a signage even on a trial basis?" I got a response back from the chief in a few days, and I believe you have that in your report, and in part it read, "As long as relatively few people are using the trail for access, then a sign suggesting that visitors use the trailhead at City Hall along with education from police officers may be acceptable solutions." At the same time, I got a call from city council members saying, "Hey, it looks like they're going to implement the signs you asked for." I misinterpreted all of this, and I thought the chief's response to my question was a willingness to install signs that were enforceable stating no parking...
Richard, your time is up. Could you please wind up? Your four minutes is up.
Yes. Okay, just real quick. I misinterpreted this as a willingness to say that we were going to have signs, "No parking for trail access." I felt great about it. I didn't do anything about it. I didn't call many of my neighbors. I told them, "Hey, this looks good." However, in the last 24 hours, I received calls from citizen and council members who said, "The actual language is going to say, 'Parking for trail access at City Hall.'" I don't think that's going to solve the problem, and I really think it's probably a waste of the city's time and effort to put something in like that. So I guess I really got the same question I had last week. Are there any legal issues with signage saying, "No parking for trail access"? That's what I think...
Okay, thank you. And Richard, you didn't mention in there, but you had received an email from me too where I outlined the difference between a soft signage, which is what the chief was proposing, that's non-enforceable, because it is a public road, which doesn't have to do with Lone Oak or trail access. It's a public road. So in order for us to have an enforceable "No parking" signage, there has to be an ordinance that supports that no parking regulation, and to do that, we would have to go through the longer route of council. So what I had initially proposed to you and a few other residents that you had included in an email was that we either need to have enough support from residents saying that they want to go down that path. The other option I gave to Sylvia, which we'll discuss when we get to the admin report, is do we want to potentially survey the residents of that particular street? Or we can go the path you just described, which is to have a softer signage that is suggestive, does not require an ordinance, in which case council would just have to approve the cost and the style of it. And I would ask, if you want to stick around, I think that we will get to that probably here in the next 10 or 15 minutes. Are there any other citizen comments to items that are on the agenda this evening or any items that are not on the agenda? And council members, if you hadn't looked, there are a few public comments that were posted on the town hall today. There were two last time I looked. Any other citizen comments? Okay, moving on to staff reports, and let's start with... Sylvia, can you pull up the dashboard?
Okay.
Thank you. And Sylvia, as of 5 o'clock, how many people did you have submit applications for the Sunset Valley election?
We just have one.
Name and position?
Mark Brunner for mayor.
Okay, so council members and public, you can now submit applications, and the deadline is posted on the city website. I've asked that staff update daily if possible, if not, as close to that as they can, to let us know who has signed up for what positions. I also put in a request today to the city administrator that we, as soon as possible, get a date, time, and moderator for each candidate so that everybody can put that on their calendar and to ensure that community impact also has that information. As you can see on my dashboard, I've changed the titling from "Close the Loop" to "Transition Items." So what I've created here is a parking lot. Of course, if any of these items can progress between now and November, that's great. But if not, this will serve as a way for any of the potential candidates for mayor to keep up and hopefully... I was going to say council member Brunner. Mark Brunner, hopefully he can attend all of our meetings, and then any other candidates to put their name in. It will allow them to more seamlessly transition because they will know what items were completed and what items were sort of left on the table, uncompleted. With that, Sylvia, would you move to agenda planning?
Yes.
So in the same vein, for agenda planning, council members, I'm going to prioritize items that are completed. So in the next few months, it's important to pay attention to deadlines. If you want to have something on an agenda, you need to have your backup completed in time for me to review it and post. And if not, it'll just get bumped to the next meeting. As you can see, 8:04 already has too much on it, and then hopefully tonight, we can get through everything. So council members, please stay on top of it with Sylvia or myself in terms of where you want things positioned between now and November. You'll see that I put on there the time period, which I think Sylvia, you corrected that for me. It wasn't... It was 7:21 was the opening date. So applications can be received up through August 17th. So if you know of anybody who's wanting to run for mayor or to... the two open council positions, please make sure that they know they need to have their application in by the 17th. The application can be accessed on the Sunset Valley homepage. The budget and finance will be wrapping up their recommendations, I believe, is it next Thursday? Is that their final meeting, Sylvia?
Correct.
Thank you. And then Sylvia and I will work on the mayor's budget, which will be filed... What's the deadline for... I put it on there.
The 12th.
So the first public hearing for the budget, council members, if you're wondering, so the mayor's budget has to be filed on the 12th. The 13th is our next council filing date for a meeting, so we will turn around and post the budget on the very next agenda, so it will show up on the 18th. So if you have residents wondering when they can come and start submitting comments and input on the budget, it will be the 18th. That will be the first meeting where we have a public hearing, the first meeting for council members to start discussing how to get the budget approved. Ideally, we will approve the budget on the 15th of September. Is that correct, Sylvia?
Yes.
Okay. Do we... Council members, are there any questions about... Are there any questions about agenda planning or anything on the dashboard? Councilor Medikus? Councilor Medikus, you are self-muted.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Mayor, you mentioned September 15th. On the financial planning calendar I have from finance, it shows approving the budget on September 22nd. Does that change?
It... That may be the official date, that it has to be approved by state, but it may be that the 15th is because of the way our council calendar works. So oftentimes, we have to move that date earlier because we don't have another meeting between the 15th and the 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Sylvia, would you correct me if that... If you happen to have a calendar in front of you, I'm going to guess that's...
That's correct. That's just how those days call. We... There's some cushion should we need it, but at this point, it is scheduled for the dates you mentioned.
So, Councilor Medikus, another way to look at that is the 15th is a Tuesday. It's due on the 22nd, which is also a Tuesday, so the only way we could have another council meeting would be if we had an off-schedule additional council meeting... Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong month. Between September 15th and 22nd, we would have to have another called meeting either on the 16th, 17th, 18th, the 21st. So that option's there. I don't think in all my years that we've had to do that. So council members, please do come. Come prepared, and it seems like most... All the council members have been attending all of the finance committee meetings, which is also helpful. Any other questions related to the dashboard or agenda planning or upcoming items or items that you don't see that you believe should be slated for a date? Okay, and with that, Sylvia, I'll hand it off to you and staff to go through all of the other items.
Thank you, Mayor. In the administrative report, we will be talking about the Lone Oak issue. A couple of information requests that are going to be due from the council. The floodplain information in the wake of Atlas 14, Councilmember Gonzalez has asked for that to come back. That is scheduled for the 18th of August. We continue doing budget preparation. There is an OpenGov story and a link on the city's homepage that shows the budget progression thus far. We do have a few more things to tweak out. This week is bring back items where the committees, staff, and other committees have created those parking lot items you referred to, and that simply means items that we need to come back and revisit. It continues to get refined more and more as we have clearer revenue projections. Obviously, COVID has affected every single projection and estimate that we have within the budget, so it's been a little bit challenging. We continue to deal with staff safety and health. We don't have any more COVID-positive employees, and we continue to work on keeping our social distancing, our masks, and our cleanliness of our environment to keep our employees healthy. In the administrative report, topic number one is Google Fiber Connectivity. Google Fiber is moving forward. They do expect project launch in 2021. The streets to be installed are as listed in the administrative report. The Public Works and the council had approved a variance. Actually, it's been a couple of years ago, and this particular variance within the code does not have a expiration date as some of ours do, and this project has been ongoing. When I arrived, staff was still working with Google, so in the entire life of the permit, I think this project continues to move forward. And the Lone Oak Trail is the one Mr. Hayes brought up earlier, and I do have Chief Carter and Roxy, if anybody has any questions to that. One of the issues that was raised was truly, what is it that the residents want? I don't know that we have a particular consensus at this particular point in time. And at one point in time, the Public Works Committee had also raised the ability to survey people on every street for things like speed and speed bumps, because those things have been raised. And now Lone Oak, the parking issue. So that's what I will be looking to the council to give me direction so that we have a clear path forward on all of our streets. It's very difficult for chief and the officers to take a piecemeal approach to parking, no parking. I think there was a discussion...
Sylvia, could you... Before we muddle it anymore, can we clarify the point, which is you can't have no parking without an ordinance to support no parking?
Correct.
Police officers cannot enforce it unless there is an ordinance to back it up. And chief, if you would echo that, just because it does seem like that may have gotten a little bit lost in translation. So chief, yeah, Chief Carter, I've unmuted you if you want to weigh in, and Roxy, you as well.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. We would need an ordinance in order to enforce the no parking. And my only concern, there's that I've been patrolling Lone Oak two, three times a day looking for the parking issues, and I haven't seen that many vehicles actually parking. Seen a lot of use of the trail on Lone Oak in the morning especially, but it's been mostly people parking at Burger Center, Burger Stadium, and then walking down Lone Oak. So I am not against any kind of permitted parking or no parking, but I don't want it to impact residents more than it might impact the one or two cars that are parking, and that's why I'm in favor more of a soft approach where I can contact... or officers can contact the one or two vehicles that we're seeing and just to let them know that this is a residential neighborhood. There's a more... The trailhead is located near City Hall. But yeah, if we were going to go the no parking route, then we would definitely need an ordinance to enforce it.
And that, just again, to be... To really re-highlight that, you would be able to do community policing with a non-ordinance-based neighborhood sign, but for example, if a resident is confronting somebody at their car, you can't write a ticket, and you can encourage them, but you can't force somebody to move their car on a public street.
That's correct. And now there is a fire hydrant near the entrance there. It's possible that some car could be in violation of parking two... Within 15 feet of the fire hydrant, so I mean...
Did you also... I saw in your email today, you had mentioned that there's two trail openings and that you would also like to see us close one. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, there's also... There's actually three trail openings there, and I would like them... I would like there to only be one, and to move that opening closer to the fire hydrant, which would give us the ability, if someone just, you know, was determined to park there, we may be able to impact them that way.
So that would be my first request, Sylvia, and then I'd like to see if council members want to add to it, but I'd like to see you bring back cost and timeline to close two of the three trailheads and allow chief to bring the visuals that he sent by email today so that council members can see them. And I'd like it to be an actual agenda item so that council can take action if they do want to put up signage, and within the backup for that, answer the other questions I had, which is the total cost to produce the sign and also install it, and then to let us know if it is something staff can easily do. And then also to confirm, and the example I used was my house, which is directly across from a trail entrance. If we do this for Lone Oak, is it easy enough for us to see if there are other trailhead locations where we could put the exact same sign, and we're not having to produce different signs for different streets or areas? Roxy, is there anything that you think we've missed?
I don't think so, but you all are on point, that the city has the authority and ability to regulate parking, but it has to be by ordinance because then otherwise, we don't have the ability to enforce or assess any kind of penalties. And also, you have to think, I think the citizen, Mr. Hayes, brought up a good point, that if, at some point, you were to go down the ordinance route of no parking, that it would affect the neighborhood and the residents of that neighborhood if they were to have guests over and things like that. They would have to seek some sort of permission.
Which we do have that on two of our roads, Roxy. We have a permit where each resident can get, I believe it's up to three permits, and they're hang tags, so they can select which of their guests park on the street.
Yes, yes, so, okay. But I think everything is covered there.
So council members, do you feel like that's enough to bring back as an agenda item for council, for staff to get the answers to, or is there... Are there any council members who actually want us to pursue the path of surveying streets? Councilmember Elliott? Yes.
Oh, thank you. No, I think I'd like to see that come back to us and see if that's a workable solution. I do have one question about the history of this. Mr. Hayes said that there were certain terms and conditions that the citizens would allegedly apply to the introduction of this. I just want to make sure that we have not violated that in either the spirit or the actual implementation. So if I could get someone to say, "Hey, no, there's nothing we've done that wasn't in the spirit and the conditions in which this was put into use," I think I'd like to have that.
Excellent. Sylvia, it's a separate... Yeah, Sylvia, it's a separate item unrelated to parking. Can you give us a summary, a cars item summary, of the agreement at the time that Lone Oak was purchased by the city and what promises or commitments were given to the residents? And then Roxy, would you overlap that to see if any of that's actually enforceable? Because as you know, oftentimes, one council will promise something, but another council actually has the authority to undo that.
Yes, I would need to see the documentation and all the documents related to that. I don't have that yet.
Sylvia, could we do that as a cars item for maybe the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, you're self-muted.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been one of the council members talking to Richard Hayes, and I told him all the things that you've said, and he was sort of proceeding on that. And I think we did have kind of a fall down with communication with staff as this proceeded because it didn't come back to him. And I think that what I would like to see is that we have... And we were proceeding towards getting consensus on that on the streets. That's basically what I said. Usually, these things work well when everybody there already agrees, and then it comes to council. And so I really would like to see that happen first so that we have agreement on the street about how people want to proceed, and then we can just, you know, move forward in certainty rather than spending council time before we've reached the decision about how the residents feel like it's best to progress. So...
Okay, I... Councilmember Gonzalez, I initially... That's what I wanted initially. There were five residents, I think five, where Richard had put me in an email thread with them. None of them responded. So what do you think would be the best approach to try to help get that consensus? Do you have any suggestions?
Well, Richard was working on it at the time when this staff thing came out, and so I think that maybe give it a couple of weeks to see if resident consensus can come together and people can decide what they want with some education about the options. I think a little bit of time, just like we did on Pillow and on Reese, where people had time to get at least the majority of a group together and decide what they thought was the best way to proceed, given the options. And I think a little bit of time would let people get more what they wanted. So that's my thought about it.
Do you have any other comments? Melissa, I lost you. It sounded like maybe you were... Melissa, did you have something else you wanted to add?
She's self-muted, Mayor.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Yes, we can hear you. I just wanted to give the residents a chance to organize what they thought, because I thought we were on point, and then I found out today that we weren't on point and that people weren't happy, and so I just want to give time for people to get happy. That's my goal. Thank you.
So, Richard, if you're still on, maybe you can try to help push it on. Doesn't it sound like we're going to do an official city survey? So really, the way to do this would be, I'd like to position it to come at the next council meeting, which gives you two weeks, because I... Part of what I understood from you is that you didn't want to delay this by another couple months. So I'm going to aim for the next council meeting, and then if it needs to be pushed out, another council meeting, I'm fine with that. But anywhere where you can get consensus on, do you want an ordinance that actually enforces no parking, or do you want something softer like what the chief provided, and then of course, council will still have to review the look, the cost. And ideally, we're creating something that is... Could be used at other trailhead parking, street parking locations. Councilmember Rosengarten?
I would be willing to go down the street with Mr. Hayes and talk to neighbors and get a survey done to where we ask the residents what they feel. Lucy Hairston did send in a comment on OpenGov saying that she also thought a no parking sign would help. So, yeah, I think getting more residents to have input on that so that when it comes to council, we aren't making a decision, and then all of a sudden, they don't want signs up on their street. Floodgates comes to mind. Thank you.
Thank you, and I did ask, because I also brought up the floodgate, which Sylvia wasn't here for, and said, "The locations that the chief is suggesting are fully city-owned, so it wouldn't even be in a city easement in front of somebody's house. It would... The signs would be located on property that is completely city-owned, including the location that I've suggested for the villas. It's one of the... It's the mailbox lot, which is also city-owned." Councilwoman Rosengarten, did you want to add anything else, or were you done? Any other comments on this topic?
I'm sorry.
We'll see it come... Oh, yes? Councilwoman Rosengarten, did you have something else to add?
Yes, I was speaking and thought I was speaking, but I was self-muted. Lisa Versacca also spoke, and her property backs up to Lone Oak about no parking signs.
Yeah, and I think a little bit to what Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned, part of it is if we're going to go house to house, or there's going to be email threads or phone conversations, part of it is everybody needs to be given the same... conversations, part of it is, everybody needs to be given the same information, which is why ideally, it would come back at a council meeting where we discuss it. Because from what I could gather, part of the confusion was, is it enforceable? Is it not? Is there a way to enforce no parking in a way that does not affect residents? That's where it gets trickier. The city attorney would have to be involved. And either way, pricing out a project, even if it's only a couple hundred dollars, especially during our current budget cuts and staff discussions, I would feel more comfortable having council agree that, yes, we want to prioritize this and fund it, because it's not budgeted. Sylvia, was there anything else on your report?
No, we're going to move on to Public Works. Actually, yes, we're moving on to Public Works. So Carolyn, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to highlight a few things. The Valley Creek Park project, the erosion control project at Valley Creek Park, is basically completed. We're just waiting for the engineer to review every, the final inspection. And we've already put in some of the erosion control mats, and everything's in place, and the hydro mulch went down. So that project has been completed. And then, I also wanted to thank one of our residents, Alfonso Carmona, who's been helping to kind of prep some of our maintenance tests for the water D test that they'll be taking very soon. And then, if there's any questions on anything else on the report.
Thank you, Carolyn. Do we have any questions for Carolyn, Public Works, or P and E Committee? That's the committee, or Public Works, just Carolyn's been attending and acting as a resource to both of those committees. Any questions for Carolyn? Councilmember Elliott?
Yes, can we have a quick update on the progression of the fix for the pond?
Yes, I can give a little bit of that. So they have, last week, they installed the, it's called a dammit product, and they installed that, different product from the last product, a lot less slimy looking, didn't have the same issues that we had last time. They've also been investigating one of the inlet pipes from, I believe it's the Public Works Building inlet pipe, that they've been investigating an area. They tried to do some of the camera ring, camera ring of the lines, and they couldn't get around some of the bend. So they were finishing up some of that, and looking at an area where there was a potential gap. So I believe that is where it currently stands now.
Do we, do we have an ETA from when this will be turned back to us and say, hey, we think it's fixed?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a question for Carolyn. On your report, you have wildfire mitigation. I was, after our zoning meeting, and we had a number of residents concerned on the Sterns, on Sterns Lane about evacuation, I was looking into our fireworks, our FireWise reports and our community plan. And part of that plan has a, I guess, a biannual review, every two-year review by Public Works, Planning Environmental, and Public Safety Committees to review the report, and make recommendations, and make updates to the report. Has this been happening?
I have not done a review on the report as of this time. That was, I was more involved on the kind of actual field work of the fire mitigation. That was something Sarah was taking care of, as far as the reporting and everything with FireWise. However, now that it is something that is mine, we will be needing to bring those back, because they have not been reviewed again.
I think that would be good. That report was done in 2012, and I think there's probably been some changes. And in particular, as I was looking through the plan, there is no clear evacuation plan of our most vulnerable residents. In the zoning hearing, we heard about Ms. Angeli, and I would have concerns that, have we identified our most vulnerable residents? And in the case of a very quick evacuation, can we get those individuals out? And what is our plan? And so I would like the committees, each of those three committees, to review the report, and then report back and make recommendations. Thank you.
Councilmember Reese, the part about committees is clear to me. The part about the, do we have a vulnerable evacuation map and plan? Is that a separate question, where you'd like the chief to brief us on that as a cars item?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Sylvia, Chief, would you add that as a cars item to come back at the next council meeting, which is, do we have a formal map and plan for evacuating, identifying and evacuating vulnerable residents?
Gotcha. I know, Chief, there is an identification procedure, and we'll write that out and present that to council in a report form.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm sorry, but the connection for sound was very difficult with, when Carolyn was speaking. And I just would like to hear a little bit more about the product that's being used right now, and how that's different, what's happening, and how it's different. I just, I really couldn't get that in the sound.
Yeah, it's just a different type of polymer mix that they're using for the, trying to seal up any cracks and seals. The product they used before was very, it was very slimy. And this one actually was a lot more, a finer product, and it seemed to have sunk into the pond at a much quicker rate. So it should actually, you probably can't even see any of it now. The stuff that was there before was a different product.
Okay. So we've just, and the whole thing has basically been sealed. It's been, it's been dropped in like it did the last time, and it's settling in. And we have a different expectation, because it's a different product. Is that correct?
I believe that is what Chasco is hoping for.
And we are camering all the lines. So what's happening right now, just, I'm just checking that what I heard is all of what's happening, is that a new product has been applied, and all the lines are being camered. And that's the process to date that we're waiting on. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the lines will only be cammered to a certain point, where they go above the elevation of the pond. The one, the line over that leads from the police department was clear. They were able to make it up that entire line, and they're finishing up the line over by, that heads to Public Works.
Okay. Is there anything else that's happening that you and I didn't just outline?
I don't think so. Sylvia, was there anything else that I missed on there?
They fixed a lot of things over the last couple of weeks. The irrigation repairs, some pump repairs. They went through their punch list methodically. The cammering of the lines is because water that's coming off is not making its way into the pond, and we really don't know where it's going. So they've not been able to resolve that issue. And the products, what you heard Carolyn say, the product is called dammit. Much finer. It is still a flock. It is still supposed to settle in the spots. Not sure if it's going to resolve the issues in their entirety, but I think that's everybody's hope.
Sylvia, there was just one little part, again, from the audience, a little bit difficult to hear. There was, there was a new, there was a thing where I'm hearing you say there's a leak that's not resolved. Is that an accurate assessment of what you just said in there? I mean, I heard all the other things and all the other repairs. But right now, I'm mostly concerned about water leaking. I'm grateful about all the other repairs. But what I'm trying to figure, what I'm trying to follow the narrative on is water leaking. And I'm hearing you say, and I'm, please report if I hear inaccurately, that there is yet a large leak that we don't know where it's going to.
Correct.
All right. And that one is in the police, in the area of the police building? Is that my memory of what it was before?
No, that's the area of Public Works. There is, there are some underground pipes that are supposed to carry water away and into the pond areas, especially during a rain. And we had a rain event, and there was no water coming out of the other end of that pipe that should have been carried. So they are trying to televise that pipe.
And what I, so what I'm going to suggest here, and correct me if I'm inaccurate, is that if we don't resolve this, our parking lot is at dam, is in, because that would probably travel under our parking lot. And if it's leaking, that it would be damaging the road base under our parking lot. Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
Not entirely. It's, Travis, please feel free to jump in. The point is, they don't know where it is.
Okay, but I guess, I guess, I would like to, in the next, in the next report, I'd like to have a general idea of where the potential leak is. Because my imagination is, Public Works through the pond goes through a parking lot. And we don't know exactly where it does, but if there's water leaking, then it's going to be, it could be very expensive, because it would be damaging our parking lot. And that's, that's my concern. So Travis, go ahead and educate me.
Councilmember Gonzalez, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. The storm drain piping that was built, we camered the line. We did find a couple of places, particularly where the storm drain line has a bend in it, that the camera couldn't quite make it up all this pipe. But the first couple of bends that we came to that it could reach, there were, there is evidence to suggest that there were leaks there. And that's where you see the excavation around, kind of near the, near the City Hall rain tank right now. That's what that excavation pit is for. We're, unless, you're addressing a concern about if water's getting out of the pipe, and it carries fine particulates out of the trench, and it could undermine the parking lot. That, there is a risk there, yes. That is, that is a side effect risk. That wasn't our primarily, primary concern, per se, from a water quality standpoint, but it is a secondary concern from a just infrastructure standpoint, yes.
Okay. I'm doing this because it's going to come up later on our agenda, and you know I'll be talking to you about it, about this having, having happened to Jones and Sunset Trail. And we can discuss that on that item. But this is, this is a similar situation, and that's certainly one of my concerns. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carolyn, Public Works? Sylvia, I don't hear Phil, or I don't see Phil raising his hand, but I can imagine that he would want to ask the question, when will we be getting our next update regarding Chasco and legal path to ensure that we are staying on track for any filings that need to be done, or any enforcement to not have this continue dragging on?
I would tell you August the 4th. By that point, we should have some reasonable conclusion as to whether or not water held with this additional additive.
Mickey, did you have a question?
I just had a comment. And for those of you that have been around here a long time, and this doesn't solve that issue about the leakage, but directly across the street from the City Hall, there was a giant recharge feature. And when AISD built that facility, they paved paradise and put up a parking lot, so to speak. And they covered that recharge feature over, and it was quite a large one. And so there may be a process of nature that has gone on immediately, that's, across the street from where that used to be, in order for recharge somehow to occur, or for, you know, for water to get into the aquifer from there. So that's just a remark. It's not a solution, but just to comment on historical perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sylvia, are there, did the chief have an additional report that he wanted to give this evening? And then Carolyn, were you complete with your report?
Yes. The only thing I wanted to say is that we should, there'll be a letter going out to residents explaining that we'll be doing the annual cleaning and inspecting of some sewer lines in the city, as well as some crack sealing to preserve some streets.
Thank you, Carolyn. That also reminds me to get your message today. So during tonight's meeting, I'll send you that PDF that we somehow got lost on Friday. Any other questions for staff? And Chief Carter, did you have additional comments that you wanted to make for the police report? Councilmember Rosengarten?
I was waiting to ask the chief about the homeless people above the Market Fair Retail Center.
Chief, you have a hot mic now.
Yes. I mentioned at the last council meeting that we are getting more and more of these impromptu camps since this COVID crisis started. And last week, we actually had one on top of one of the stores over, above Bye Bye Baby. And it looks like they've been up there a while. Someone noticed them, and then they gave us a call. But we're noticing them pop up. We're trying to get on them as soon as we, we notice it. And we're also clearing out baskets. If we find property that we can identify, we impound the property and hold it for the owner. But otherwise, if we can't identify it, we are throwing it in the garbage. Also, for my report, it's not on the report, but overnight on Oakdale, it looks like almost every mailbox that was capable of being opened was opened. We don't know at this time if, what was stolen, but the mail thieves are back. And I recommend that, if it's at all possible, to the residents install the locking mailboxes. I noticed over in the Meadows, several residents have purchased that kind of mailbox. That's really the only solution. These things happen so fast, and they seem to happen pretty regularly here and throughout Austin. So I would recommend that residents, if possible, go ahead and purchase and install the locking mailboxes. And then, one more thing, just, I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Andrucci. He wrote an article about the role that small police departments can play in improving policing, and it was selected for the July 2020 issue of Police Chief Magazine. So Lieutenant Andrucci is now a published law enforcement author, and it's gone to his head.
Councilmember Rosengarten, did you have any other comments before I move to the next council member?
Yes. There were four mailboxes in the Meadows that were open, so not everybody changed to locking mailboxes. What we did the last time when there was mail thieving, I sent an email to everybody showing them the style of locking mailbox I was going to get. And a number of folks went ahead and got them immediately. And we shared one mason, who went around and just scheduled everybody and got it done. And congratulations to Lieutenant Andrucci. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. What's the status or progress of your committee working on a rollout of, I think what I was envisioning was that it was going to be a neighborhood watch program, where we sort of revise it with new signage, and maybe a consolidated set of recommendations, including potential vendors. And I don't know, just where you would maybe give us a catalog of things that we can do as residents. Is that still going to happen?
Yes, it should be ready for the next council agenda.
Okay. That would be a great thing to include in the new digital newsletter, which Sylvia, could you let us know, I think the first edition of that will be, is it tomorrow that you're going to publish it?
Yes, I'm just waiting for your final, your final blessing, and it's ready to go live.
You will get it tonight. And so the new digital newsletter, do you have an idea of the frequency you were going to try to start with, Sylvia?
Monthly.
And it will sit on the homepage, and old, similar to what we used to have, older versions will be archived, so people can look at the current or old versions of the newsletter. And it will be open for input from residents and councilmembers moving forward. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for, for the chief. Last week, there was, I was coming down the 290 access, and there were at least four police cars at the Uplands. Do you know what was going on there?
Yes. There was a dispute inside of a van, and the driver of the van and the passenger actually got out of the car and had a fight on the side of the service road. The van driver then drove through the fence there into the Uplands, and attempted to run over the passenger and his girlfriend in the field there. the passenger and his girlfriend in the field there at the Uplands. We, the driver was eventually contacted. They didn't, none of the parties wanted to give any information on the other party. And it was one of those, he said, she said, but however the driver, we do have charges for the criminal mischief to the fence.
Thank you.
Chief, am I correct that the camera, we had, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we put all cameras on hold, but I am now curious based on the report you just gave. Is there any recommendation from you for the retail sector to improve or add or reposition where cameras are to help prevent situations like where you described, people living on the roof for some period of time with it going unnoticed?
Um, I'm going to bring back up the cameras whenever, it will probably not during this budget year, but sometime next budget year. I don't know if the cameras would have picked up this, the camp on top of Bye Bye Baby because they entered from the rear of the building. But certainly I do believe they're a good idea for the retail center and to be able to move them to the streets at times. So I'll be, I'll bring it back up during the next budget year. I'm sure the Public Safety Committee, I know many were disappointed when they were not, when they were taken off for this year.
So sort of maybe a simpler question to that is how do they get access? And is there a way to cut that off?
There is. We, we couldn't like, sort of reproduce the way they got on there, but we know how they got on there. But if they had, they were pretty determined to be able to do it. The average person couldn't get up there the way that they did. But we, we know how they did it and we're going to try to work with the shopping center to make a few adjustments to that, to their point of entry. But it wouldn't have been easy however they did it. And that would have taken a lot of work.
Councilmembers, do we have any additional questions for the chief or staff? I do apologize to our auditors. I know we had a time certain, but I wanted to get us through our consent items for the evening. Councilmembers, we are now at item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent, which might allow some people to drop off the call if they were waiting on those items. Councilmember Rosengarden, you have the floor?
I'd like to move to approval on consent, agenda item number five, which is the minutes, number six, elections, number seven, interlocal dispatch, number 11, it's just a time extension, and number 12, Sunset Valley Elementary banners. These are all simple items that should be approved on consent. Thank you.
Councilmember Elliott, are you the second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve on consent, items number five, six, seven, 11, and 12. Those are the only items that are eligible, so nothing else can be added. Are there any councilmembers who would like to remove any of those items? Councilmember Gonzalez?
No, I was going to be a second. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Do we, are there any councilmembers who wish to remove items from that list? Five, six, seven, 11, and 12. Okay, councilmembers, I'll call for the vote. If you would please submit your vote in the chat feature. And Sylvia, if you would read the votes once you have all of them. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Okay. Councilmember Medickas, yes. Councilmember Elliott, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Rosengarden, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We approve on consent, item number five, approval of the minutes from the July 7th, 2020 regular meeting. Item number six, approval of an ordinance calling for the general election on November 3rd, 2020, for the mayor and two city council positions with deliberation and action. Item number seven, discuss and approve the interlocal agreement for emergency law enforcement dispatch service between Travis County and the City of Sunset Valley with deliberation and action. And item number 11, consider approval of a renewal of a watershed development permit to construct the Violet Crown Trail within the City of Sunset Valley with deliberation and action. And last, item number 12, consider approval of a request from the Sunset Valley Elementary PTA for a variance from Chapter 14 Sign Regulation Section 14.706B and 14.707A for a series of banner signs to be installed along the fence of Sunset Valley Elementary School to recognize school sponsors, and request for variance from sections 14.505 and 14.805 to waive the $350 in associated fees with deliberation and action. That now brings us to our, I'm going to skip over item number eight, since we have a time certain, and we will come back to that. So that brings us now to item number nine, time certain, presentation by Haney and Company of the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Annual Financial Audit. And I'm not sure if Sylvia was able to get ahold of you all, but I did make the polite request that you guys give the highest level summary possible, around five minutes if possible, so that we can then open it up to council members and if they actually have questions. This has been reviewed and approved already by the Budget and Finance Committee. And so Sylvia, if you would go through and unmute any of the speakers for the auditor's firm. And once you guys all have hot mics, y'all are welcome to dive in and start your presentation.
John, it's just you, correct?
Yeah, it's just me.
Okay. You're unmuted. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I'll be brief. And city councils sure appreciate the opportunity. Do you all have a copy of the audit in front of you? Or Sylvia, am I able to share my screen?
She can give you screen share if that makes it easier for you to control it, or she can pull it up as it was posted in the agenda. Either way.
Either way, the, either way, that's easiest for you.
Well, I'll pull it up. Just tell me what page to go to.
Okay. Let's start with, let's start with page nine. Okay, so I'm just going to focus on the real high level numbers here so that you can, you can just see how things went from a thousand mile view, I guess. This is the statement of position, which is a highly aggregated and summarized version of the financial statements, which are included later on in this report. And this is contained in the MDNA, the Management's Discussion and Analysis. What this, what this statement of net position shows is that your total assets of the city were $50,106,467 as of September 30th, 2019, which is an increase from $47,75173 in the prior year. That's a $2.3 million increase. And, and that's mostly a result of construction in progress during that period of time. If you look down a little bit lower under current, under the liability section, we ended the year with $2.1 million in total liabilities compared to $1.7 million. So up about $300,000. And then down at the bottom, this section that shows net position, there are three categories of net position. Net position is the equity of the city. Total net position as of September 30th, 2019 was $48,347,565, up from $45,598,296. So that can be broken out between what's invested in capital assets of $29 million. And then there's restricted cash of $8 million. So there's about $10 million, about $11 million of unrestricted net position that can be used and consumed in the operations of the city, which is up slightly from, from last year, $10,874. Now, if you could turn to page 10. Page 10 is the statement of changes in net position. This is the income statement at a highly aggregated comparative level. Total revenue for the city amounted to $8,221,000 compared to $8,165,000 in the prior year. This is an increase of about $55,000. Total expenses were $5,984,000 as compared to $6,268,000 in the year before. So expenses are down about $284,000. The total change in net position was $2,749,000 compared to $2,260,000. This is an increase of about $488,000. That's, that's like an increase in your net income over the prior year. So overall, a very healthy balance sheet and income statement that the city has. Again, this is a very high level picture of, of how the, the government's finances look. I will say that, that we performed a two-part audit, the first part being an audit of, of the financial statements, the second part being an audit of compliance with laws and regulations in accordance with the Yellow Book standards, government auditing standards. And we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls or compliance that merit reporting on in this report. So furthermore, both opinions are considered to be a clean opinion, unmodified report. So overall, good, good report for this year. Take the time at your leisure to, to look through the other pages of this report, and it'll provide some perspective and, and background on, on the MDNA that I just went over. Any questions?
John, if you would just-
And I'm going to let it sit for a second, John, to see if any councilmembers, or this is also open to the public, if the public has any questions.
Okay.
I just wanted, John, to go over the observation on the capital asset program that's listed here on the screen. It's just a recommendation.
Oh, I see. Okay. So what we had recommended as we were doing the audit is, is that there be a, like, another account set up called a capital outlay account that will help to better account for the, the capital assets and the capital outlay that's incurred each year. Doing so will provide some better detail and, and assist in, in being able to account for those things in a more efficient manner. Also, it helps with the budget in making that, you know, providing a line item that can be compared to actual, that will be more, more readable and understandable. So that's kind of the crux of that recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate those recommendations and I certainly hope we implement them. I think when we get to page 35, on, on the, the records, and also, well, I think you were sort of went over five, is essentially, we are in a great shape. And if you get to page 35, that seems to be an accurate place of the, the hole in our budget. Is, would that be a fair assessment? That essentially, it says we're in good shape, but, but the main hole that's sort of draining in the budget would be in the utility fund, which is not news to people who've been on finance, but just in case anybody else is listening. Would that be an accurate assessment?
Now, you referred to page 35 of the, of the-
Yeah, your interfund transfers.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, those interfund, you're, you're exactly right. That would represent, you know, you've had to subsidize that. And, and so that's how that's, that's how that's worked. So right now, the, the crime control and prevention district has about $67,000 in cash as all. And you've had, actually what you've done is you've, you've transferred some of that cash over to the other funds. So that's brought your fund balance down from $177,000 down to $67,000 from the prior year. So those interfund transfers are all supposed to offset. And that's what that page shows.
I just wanted to call that out. I think it's a great report and I appreciate what you've done. And I appreciate your good recommendations. But I just wanted to call that to everyone's attention, just because it is healthy, but, but that's, that's where the, where the little funnel out is. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions.
Hello?
That's Councilmember Elliott?
Yes, I have a question. You mentioned our equity has increased because our capital assets increased. What effect, if any, I think it was in 2019, we agreed to extend the depreciation period for our, a lot of our utility infrastructure. Did that impact our capital assets valuation at all?
Well, the capital assets, I mean, yes, it will ultimately, you know, whenever you change the lives of your assets that you're depreciating, it changes the book value accordingly. And so-
So, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, the only point I'm making is, it could be construed that our capital assets went up in value, whereas we simply chose to depreciate them over a longer period. Is that a true statement?
That, that is, that is possible. But let's see what actually happened in capital assets. Go to page. Actually, you can look at page 13 of the MDNA. This shows what actually happened in 2019. No, actually, I'm sorry. I got the wrong one. Further back. Okay. It's actually page 37. I apologize. 37 shows that your total net book value of your, of your capital assets, go back to 36, actually, total net book value went up by $28,000 because you had about $2 million in additions in construction in progress. That's really where the, the, the big change happened. And there was about $570,000 in depreciation, which, you know, kind of reduced the effect of that. But, but overall, about a $1.6 million increase in your, in your capital assets and your governmental activities is what accounts for the change, again, primarily construction in progress. Your business activity, very minor change, only a little bit of depreciation. I don't know if that helped clarify that for you?
Yes, it does. It, it, it's, you gave the answer I thought you would. Yes, thank you.
Councilmembers, do we have any additional questions or any questions or comments from residents? And Rox, you have a quick agenda question. If on our agenda, the action isn't posted, but on the backup connected to that agenda item, is the agenda item backup enough to cover, in this situation, acceptance of the audit is not included in the agenda description, but it is included in the backup portion of the description? Is that sufficient to take action?
That's item number 10, Mayor. Accept it with deliberation and action.
Okay. Councilmembers, we are now at item number 10, which is to accept the audit. Councilmember Rosengarden?
I move to accept the audit as presented.
Thank you. And Councilmember Reitz?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Do we have- Do we have any, Karen, I'm gonna lower your hand, and then if you were wanting to speak to the motion before we vote. Okay, Councilmember Medickis?
Yeah, I just had a question in this motion. Does that also include us actually implementing the suggested changes, the recommendation?
Not as it's currently stated. So that would be a question for the motion maker in the second, if they want to include that. Could the motion maker in the second either unmute yourselves or raise your hand so that you can answer Councilmember Medickis' question? Councilmember Elliott? Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I would-
And Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I would add that.
And Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Yes.
So the motion now is to accept the audit, including the recommendation. Do we have any additional comments or questions from councilmembers or from the public? Councilmembers, please submit your vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Okay, Councilmember Reed's, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Medickis, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Elliott, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to backtrack to item number eight. Report on Sunset and Jones intersection drainage issue with council deliberation and possible action. Sylvia, I will let you take the lead.
We keep, my mute and unmute keeps going on and off.
Yeah, I keep muting you. Right now, it sounds good, but there have been a couple of times where I start getting an echo if your mic stays on when I'm speaking. It's not doing it now.
Okay. So Sunset Trail and Jones Road intersection has been a topic of discussion since I arrived. Ms. Dawson is, I believe, online with, not just Ms. Dawson, but that little drainage basin has about five properties that are in what feels like consistent inundation after a rain. So staff was working on a project on Sunset Trail where we were going to be replacing some water line and also doing some street repair. So I asked Miller Gray and Civil Land Group to take a look at the drainage issue. Initially, when we had looked at the drainage issue, staff's comment was, well, we're gonna dig the ditch deeper. We'll make it deeper. Well, you can't keep doing a deeper ditch if, one, the flow's not there. And two, then you get to a point where the ditch is too deep, and, you know, something starts happening to the street on either side. So we've been reviewing this. I've asked the engineers to look at it from a complete project basis. This has not been back to Public Works. I will just make that caveat initially. But Travis is here to answer any questions. I know there have been a lot of discussions about, hey, we just did the sidewalk there. Why are we having this issue right now? The reality is where the houses sit off of Jones, I can call it bad driveway design. I can call it a lot of things. Water is flowing into those driveways that are off in that particular area. Some sections of Jones, as shown on the elevation shots, are actually very flat, especially right by the school. But then, when you get to other areas, that drop is significantly faster. And so water sometimes flows too fast and can't make it into where it's supposed to go. And hence, it ends up going into folks' property. So I will turn it over to Travis for any questions that the council may have.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, did you have a question?
Yeah, first off, Sylvia, I sent you some pictures back on June 23rd, 20th that will help council when they can see what we're talking about.
Yes, let me pull those up right now. One second.
Sylvia, while you're pulling that up, I'll, since I'm the sponsor of this item, to clarify what I'm looking for. Historically, staff has been put in a position of having to answer to the residents as to what, if anything, the city's going to do. What I'm looking for tonight is for us to help staff so that they're not in that position and for us to be clear on what we want the next step to be. I do see that Ruth Dawson is on the call. She is an example of a resident who I want her to be able to hear clearly from council what's going to happen next, and then when we expect this to be back in front of council for any potential decisions.
Travis, could you unmute yourself? Let's see. Get out of those. Okay. This is one of the storm drains areas right off of Jones. So let's go to the, let's go to the next. This is the picture right in front of Ruth's property, I believe. Rudy, is that correct?
Yes, it is in the front of her property. And the other picture that you showed is showing a drainage on the backside of the new sidewalk that we put in. So when water comes off of Jones, it has to circle around behind the sidewalk, come down on Reese, and then circle around and come back behind to go into this drainage.
Correct, and water doesn't flow uphill without a pump.
Correct.
Sorry, I'm trying to get the rotation.
And this picture is on Ruth's property, and this is a drain she had put in that she paid for herself to have water from the roof come into this drainage. And then it was supposed to alleviate water from her property to the street. The street is higher than her property. So everything backs towards her property instead of away from her property. And then to add it, all her roof water is coming right on in and running towards the front of this, the top of this picture.
There's the inlet at the back of the sidewalk again. Sorry. Don't mean to make everybody dizzy. There you go.
Okay, this one shows an inlet that comes from Jones towards, is that Sunset right there?
Yes.
Okay, that's Sunset, and it's on the front, which is perfect. Something like that could have been on the other side also. Versus making the water now, right here is where the water's gotta come down on Sunset and then turn around and come back underneath the brand-new sidewalk in order for it to help Ruth. And this picture also shows that this topography is higher than what the rest of the street is. The street then goes downhill. Here, you can show, see how high the water has gotten on her property.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, do you want me to pass the mic to the next question? Or did you have additional questions for Sylvia or Travis?
I had no questions. Just wanted to clarify the picture so everybody understood before Travis talked. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Elliott?
Yeah, yes, I got a, I guess I'd like to hear from Travis as to what he thinks the problem is, how we got into this problem, and what is the comprehensive plan to address it. I'm not that interested in piecemeal approaches to this, because it seems that this has been going on for a long time. I'd like to understand what, if anything, we did wrong, how we could fix it, and want a comprehensive plan and an idea of the cost of that plan to fix it. We can't have residents unduly affected by this, if it's something the city has caused or has, you know, caused it to get worse over a period of time. So I'd like to know what the real fix is for this.
Thank you, Councilmember Elliott. And Travis, a portion of the question that Councilmember Elliott just asked is not, is a legal question. And so, Roxy, what I'd also like you and Sylvia to be aware of and helping Travis with is how many, Sylvia, you just moved past the image that showed, is that also an image of showing of how many-
Yes.
Homes are affected? And then, Roxy, part of what we have to be careful, especially in public meetings, is differentiating where is there a drainage problem, which is different from where is there a drainage property that has been caused by or that is the responsibility of the city to improve? Which is, you know, that's the part we want to not confuse the public as Travis helps us navigate. Councilmember Elliott's question.
All right, Mayor, I'll answer Councilmember Elliott's question. This is Travis Wilson with Miller Gray Engineers. To, the drainage problem on, in this, around these three or four properties is a combination of two primary concepts. The first concept is the land itself on the lots is rather flat. And so that local drainage, right in the immediate vicinity of the homes and lots, is flat and doesn't convey water very well. The second issue is really runoff from Jones Road, which is Sunset Valley's property, and runoff from Jones Road is escaping Jones Road and getting down the driveways along Jones Road and getting into the properties that way. And that shouldn't really be happening, but it is happening. And that, Councilmember Rosen Garden had asked me a couple of weeks ago about how exactly or what causes that. And there's a, at each driveway crossing where Sunset Trail or the sidewalk, I'll call it the sidewalk, the Jones Road sidewalk approaches these driveways. In order to accommodate a reasonable driveway slope combined with ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, issues, the driveway has a small dip in it. Normally, a driveway would have a six-inch rise in it to keep runoff captured in the pavement. But in this instance, that rise is only really a couple of inches, and that's insufficient. And so runoff, as it comes down the curb line, hits these driveways, Ms. Dawson's driveway included, and comes down the driveway at that point and gets in the property. And that then just makes the local drainage that Ms. Dawson was already experiencing, it makes that issue worse. Because now you have a secondary source of water that you're trying to deal with. So the idea, Councilmember Elliott, behind what we're trying to do here, or the comprehensive approach is we're going to do a detailed study of the drainage area using a topography to figure out where exactly the water is going and where it's coming from and how much land is draining. We have a pretty decent idea now, but we'll do a more comprehensive analysis. And then to try to, the solution that is most likely to pop out of this is the addition of a couple of inlets. Councilmember Rosen Garden had pointed one out when Sylvia was showing those pictures, a couple of curb inlets along Jones Road to intercept these waters before they pass by the driveway, to try to receive those waters, intercept them, put them in a storm drain pipe, and thus mitigate that issue. Councilmember Elliott, does that satisfactorily answer your question?
I don't need to be careless or anything on this. We don't seem to do drainage right, and I hope we're gonna get it right this time, I guess, is my concern.
Miller Gray was not the engineer for that particular project?
No, I understand, I understand. And I'm not levying this, you know, but I just listened to, you know, a brand-new building with a parking lot. It's not draining right, and now we have this issue. I just want to make sure that we do drainage right, you know, for the sake of our residents here. And I just want some assuredness of whatever we're gonna do is gonna address this problem in a comprehensive manner. And we're not gonna be revisiting this again in two years or three years because we piecemealed the approach to it. I understand expense is a consideration, but, you know, maybe we're throwing money, good money after bad. But if we do want to piecemeal, I'm just looking for an answer that says this is a comprehensive measure that will do this and that will address it. And that's all I'm looking for. And I'm a little gun-shy based on what I heard earlier about, you know, the new building and the parking lot and things of that nature, so.
To, Councilmember Elliott, to echo what you just said, drainage is, it's a complex science. There's a lot of theory behind it, and-
Right.
It frustrates a lot of folks. And sometimes you have, you know, sometimes there are projects that are, maybe it's a utility project, but it's not really meant to address storm issues. Or maybe it's a roadway project that wasn't really meant to address storm issues. And so sometimes drainage issues don't get necessarily addressed, or maybe they even get exacerbated by another project. And that's, it can be a very frustrating experience. I agree with you on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Okay, can you hear me? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so to address Councilmember Elliott's point, this is a redo already. Because one of the, this is an 18-year project that started on the books as Katie's first project and got done just as she was leaving. And one of the reasons that it took so long was the amount of engineering that those sidewalks that were supposed to take. And it was like sidewalks, 200K, and it was, and why, and we all asked on Public Works, why was it so expensive? And they said, well, there's a drainage problem in there. So it'd be different, Travis, if it wasn't one of the specific things that we said was gonna be addressed in this. And so that's my concern. And if it wasn't Miller Gray that did the engineering, and I don't remember who it was, then we really do need to talk to those people about why this didn't address the engineering. That said, we don't really have people with strong memories who remember all of this. And I talked to Randy McAmel, who's the Chair of Public Works, about this project. And he said that he thought that the pipes were sized well enough, because I specifically asked him to look at that when he looked at this, and that perhaps we need to have cameras. So I'm putting a suggestion in right here, right now, that while we have the cameras, which I understand from Carolyn are coming next week, that we have this area cammed, because he thinks that there might be a blockage in this. And I want to take that off the table, that there isn't a blockage in the pipes while we have the cameras out here. So if council agrees, I really think that we should camera these pipes while the camera people are out here next week. So that's suggestion number one. Suggestion number two is that we look at that contract and see whether or not, as my memory says, that it did address drainage, and make sure that there isn't some liability on the other engineers to have had this done properly. Because my memory of why it took so long was that drainage was a significant factor in this. Having had a house just like Ruth's that I lived in right before this house, where I was below grade, and the only way I solved it was putting a grate there, which would not, which, you know, it's good to hear the description of why we didn't have the bump, but I don't understand why we don't have a grate there to drop some water into the pipe on that driveway. That's the way I solved it at my other house, and I think that it might be a good solution. So I agree that we certainly need to have drainage on the front of this. I don't understand why that wasn't in the original design. But I also think we could put a grate on that driveway in the city right of way that also drops into the pipe. And I don't think that would mess with the ADA height, but maybe, but like I said, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. But those are my suggestions, and I strongly suggest that we do hop on the thing for next week so that we get the cameras done. Thank you.
Sylvia, Travis, is that an easy enough thing to add on, or is there a significant cost to adding scope to that?
To add, to camera the, or this is Travis, to camera the lines is, Councilmember Gonzalez's suggestion is fairly normal. When I do other Public Works projects, I've done them in the past for the city. Sometimes they camera the lines, we camera the lines in advance, sometimes not, it depends. And so if the council, it's not out of the ordinary. It's a fairly normal exercise to camera the lines. It's a fairly normal exercise to camera the lines. I'd say 50/50 on how often that gets done, to kind of assess the existing infrastructure. It's an easy add.
If it doesn't cost us anything, that would be fine. But we've already got sewage lines coming out next week that Carolyn tells me we can do by the foot and just add that on to the existing contract for next week. So we can, we might be able to save money by doing it that way, rather than having to do a separate contract here. So I just put that into staff's hands.
I agree. That sounds good.
Sylvia and/or councilmembers who are speaking, do we see any issue in adding that?
No.
And what's a rough estimate of what the cost addition is? Is it a couple hundred or a couple thousand dollars?
I'm not sure. I will get a report and get that out to the council by Friday.
Carolyn said it was a cost by foot. So we already have it on an existing one, and she would just be adding more square foot, square feet to the sewage one. So it's already on an existing contract, but you can get that from Carolyn.
Well, what I'm asking of staff is, is that a cost that needs to be approved by council? Is it a couple, you know, price per squi, per linear foot could also be based on what that price is? I don't, I still don't have a clear idea of approximately how much money we're talking about adding.
I'm not sure on the
Sylvia, I lost you. What'd you say you're not sure about?
I said I'm not sure about the cost, but our contract is on a sort of a PO basis, so I don't anticipate it needing to come back to council. But I will give the council a report ASAP on the cost.
Okay. Okay. So before we leave this agenda item, we'll need to figure out, are we adding that? Are we not adding that? Councilmember Elliott?
Yeah, I would say we should add that, but my question is something different. And I know we talked about this at a previous council meeting, but I'm going to ask one more time because we're all talking about getting some here this long term and taking it into consideration. I'll ask again, are we convinced that what's happening on the construction at the Austin AISD across the road is not going to impact us along Jones Road in terms of flood issues or drainage issues? I know we talked about that a week ago, two weeks, two council meetings ago, I think, or three. I'd like to raise the question one more time so we have 100% assuredness that we do not consider that to be an issue that is going to cause additional problems along Jones Road.
Travis, you want to answer that? Travis?
Yes. To answer that, Councilmember Elliott, the work that's being done on, at the Sunset Valley Elementary School, that driveway's now been poured. That's actually, the way it is now, the way it is now is actually the way it should have been done originally to establish what really should have been designed originally, a driveway with a six-inch rise on it.
Okay. So there's no hindsight, no going back in hindsight telling us anything here. It is, we're convinced what they did is appropriate and it's not going to add to our problems on Sunset, on Jones Road.
No, it does not add to the problems along Jones Road. Joan, we're, and what, both what Sunset Valley Elementary did and what we're kind of proposing here along the south side of Jones Road is to try to essentially repair that drainage condition, intercept the water, keep the water in Sunset Valley's right-of-way where it should be, and not let it escape the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
And Travis, am I right that another way to answer that question would be, AISD's work isn't likely to make it worse than its current condition, but additional development or construction or redevelopment in the future could adversely affect drainage. So at some point, it might be hard for a particular person or resident to attribute it to AISD. And like you said, what they're doing there is what should have been done before, but that doesn't mean it's going to improve drainage, and it doesn't guarantee that drainage won't get worse in the future.
Yes, you're correct. You're correct, Mayor.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
Miki Powers has had her hand up for quite a while. I'll wait my turn.
I'm addressing councilmember questions first before we move to the public. So are there any additional council questions for either Sylvia or Travis?
So what I had is, Travis, what is your recommendation of a solution off of Jones?
Councilmember Rosengarden, my, the, after we conduct this analysis, the solution I think we will aim at is the addition of one or more 10-foot open curb cut, curb cut style inlet, the picture you had shown a few minutes ago, curb cut style inlets along Jones Road, particularly in the vicinity of these driveways. Councilmember Gonzalez had alluded to the idea of a great inlet. Great inlets do serve a drainage function on a professional and personal standpoint. I think curb inlets receive a lot more water than grate inlets. There actually is a grate inlet along Jones Road now. It's just insufficient in terms of its size to capture the runoff that we need to capture.
Thank you, Travis, and I agree with you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Travis, I also agree with you. And I just want to make sure that we, if responsibility is on the previous engineering firm for not having done this right in the first place, I'd like to make sure that's explored. And so I'm saying that to staff, that that gets checked out. And then the other thing that I'm saying is that I really like us to, if you look down, it's a half million dollar project almost by the time we potentially get through this. And so all I'd like us to approve, and all that I think the Chair of Public Works was talking about was the engineering at this point, that we, we need to get our mind around what the problems are. And I like everything that you said. I just, I just want to make sure that we, make sure that the other, the other engineering firm, if they have responsibility, is held to it. And then that we go to the point of a plan before we do anything else. Thank you.
Sylvia, did you want to do, it sounds like Ruth wanted to speak, but her mic isn't working. Do you want to read her comment in?
Yes. Ruth says, can you say for me that I asked staff for a grate on top of the driveway since the sidewalk plans were being studied, but I was ignored?
Sylvia, do you want to respond to that?
No, that is the same comment that I received from Ruth when I arrived. And we did have a prior staff member who gave her an apology for the way she was treated on a particular site visit. So my commitment is, again, to address it in a holistic manner, because we are going to be addressing water and street down Sunset. It makes sense to address it all at one time while we're there as opposed to, again, a piecemeal approach. And Travis and Civil Land are on one accord with us. It's better to do it all at one time.
And Sylvia, would you remind me what month you started here?
September 2019.
September. So I walked the property with Ruth, Katie, and Josh in August. They've been late July, so within six weeks of your, when you started. And Ruth, I would imagine over the years, she's walked the property with so many staff members and council members, elected officials, that she, that has increased her frustration because there's been a consistency of, there is a problem, but no clear path, even if it's a no, we aren't going to do anything or we can't. That's been part of her struggle, is that she can't even get a clear answer out of the city. So when I walked it with Josh and Katie, I was given assurance from Katie that within 30 days, she would be able to create something written that could be approved by staff, council, Travis, that would be signed by the property owner, that would clearly say, this is what the city can do, this is what the city cannot do, these are the things that the city recommends, whether it falls in either one of those categories. That never happened. And so I know Ruth would also remember that we had that walk. She was also given that assurance. I then followed up with her numerous times, saying it's coming. And then it just never happened. So now we're here a year later, which for Ruth feels like many years later. So again, that's why I'm looking, I'm looking for, eventually for us to have something that city attorney and staff and property owner can sign that says, this is what the city's going to do, this is what the city is not going to do, so that future councils don't have to wonder, was there something that should have been done that was not done?
Mayor, and I think
Councilmember Rosengard, oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry. I think the issue with that was trying to, you know, again, Councilmember Elliott made a comment about drainage, trying to address what appeared to be just a drainage issue on one property. Well, it's not. There's a mini basin there, you can see from Travis's, you know, four very large parcel area. In the normal course of a normal subdivision, multiple, multiple houses would sit there, and that's essentially a bowl. And for water to be able to come around, to do a 90, and basically whirlpool around and kind of go uphill, those are impossible feats of engineering. And that's readily apparent when you just stand at that corner of Jones and Sunset. So I think part of the issue was just the basic understanding of hydrology, one, and two, what the, what the scope of the entire problem was. Travis identified it pretty quickly. And so I think Miki's going to tell you, she's also inundated, but she's right there in one of those affected properties.
Yes, and I agree. There was a little bit of a lack of staff leadership, which came in part from Katie and maybe others. But that was my frustration, and I stepped into it, you know, just here in, you know, the last 12 months. Ruth has been receiving circular information from staff members for years. And for me, at some point, something needs to be put in writing. At one point, Katie was suggesting, hold on, I'm getting feedback. At one point, Katie was suggesting, well, I think we could do a little bit of work here and a little bit of work there. We might be able to get some volunteers to do some work here. And that's what I don't want to happen. I don't, to what you just said, I don't want a piecemeal approach. I want the city to address everything that should and come up with one comprehensive plan. And any and all residents that are affected should all be signing the same thing, acknowledging what they are or are not going to allow on their property. And that's where Roxy, I'd be looking for you to tell us how we should be approaching this, if you have any advice. Councilmember Rosengarden?
The first thing is, I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez, is that we should consider holding responsible the previous engineers who designed this mess. The second thing I want to add is, yes, the city is only responsible for what the city may have created, and the city streets for drainage. We are not responsible to come on to individual properties and to alleviate total drainage issues. What happens in a neighborhood, I've worked for builders for many years, what happens in a neighborhood that is not developed and all built at one time, is each time another house is built, years later, they may have been built 10 years apart, the developer and builder is not considering what happens to the property behind them or the property next to them. And so they only think about that property that they are developing and how the topography is going to be laid out. But all of it affects everybody downhill, and thus there are some problems. Those home sites on Jones and Reese are very flat. So there is no runoff. And as I mentioned earlier, where Ruth paid for, they call it a French drain, but it's a concrete gutter, basically, that's on the ground. And the street is higher than her property. Well, there's no way we, as a city, are going to go ahead and lower the street so that water from the street doesn't flow onto our property. Whoever put in that French drain should have been aware of that, because the street should have been there before that French drain was put in. But I'm not, I don't have that history. So knowing that, they would have to divert it differently. But I'm not an engineer, and I've gone too far. Basically, I'm saying, I agree with you, Mayor. There's only certain things that we, as the city, are responsible for. And I agree that we should hold the engineering who did this mess responsible.
Right. And if this, I feel like part of where Katie was misleading me a little bit too, was at one point, she made me feel like it might be something that was budgeted by council. But that's where I'm looking for Travis and Sylvia. If this really ends up being a quarter of a million dollar project, council needs to, we need to make sure that we're informing council of that as we go along so that we don't, you know, again, overcommit to do work that we either haven't budgeted, or maybe we don't have the money to budget. And then to my point about creating an agreement, or something, something that documents, this is what the city's going to do. And then, for example, with Ruth, it may be, we're not going to go onto your property and change the French drains that you've done, but we can recommend a different type of system that you could install yourself that would better manage the water on your own property. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with Councilmember Rosengarden with everything she said. But also, what I'd like to add, because again, I have a similar, I had almost an exact problem to Ruth, and I currently, over here on Reese, have flooding from the back. And so the hope is, I think, for us as a city, and what I would hope for Ruth is that we're not going to solve this problem. We might be able to improve it, but we're not going to solve it. And because it's a mess. It's lower than the street, it's, I think, trapped from the back and the front. It is a bowl, as Sylvia described. And so what we can maybe do for these four homes is, is put, like we did sort of on Reese, a place where if the property owner wants to dump the water, they can do that. So that, I think, is our best hope as a city to help these residents, is we can say, okay, this is the flow. If you want to put in French drains or drainage, like I'm about to have to at my house, I just got to bid for eight grand for this, is to, is to divert it to this pipe in the front, or this place in the front. This is, this is the, this is the best shot on your property. And that's going to be true all up and down Sunset Trail also, because this is not the only place we have problems with flooding on Sunset Trail. And that we kind of look at the properties and say, here's your place to offload your water. But otherwise, it's not ever going to solve this problem, because it's a bowl, and we have a lip to that bowl. And what we, as a city, could do is perhaps, you know, put places where they can drain out that bowl. But that really is the problem. And I think, you know, if we can put that into our scope of work, then that could be helpful to residents. Other than that, it's still going to flood. As Sylvia said, it's just, water ain't going to flow uphill. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Sylvia, Travis, Roxy, this is the last time I'm going to say it. Before we start agreeing to anything, somewhere council's going to need a better map that says, this is what, this is the cost of what needs to be studied, this is the cost of what needs to be fixed, these are the guarantees we are making, these are the guarantees we're not making. And that last part to me goes to what Councilmember Gonzalez just said. It's still a flood-prone area. So we're, even in doing a couple hundred thousand dollars improvements, there's still going to be houses that flood. Sylvia, Roxy, Travis, do any of you want to say anything else before we move to resident comments?
No, we will, we will get a more precise dollar amount for the televising. Carolyn says it's a couple of dollars a foot, might be, you know, 750 linear feet there. Need to get you a better count. And then narrow the scope of this somewhat, depending on what we find, and then present that as well back to the council.
How long do we anticipate that might take for you to be able to bring that back to us?
No more than 30 days.
Miki Powers?
All right. Thank you very much. I have the middle square on the property that faces onto Jones Road. And I have two problems, and they certainly, one of them, well, the same one that affects Ruth coming off the road affects that middle property. Since I've only had that property for five years, I don't have a historical perspective on what that was like before Jones Road was paved and added to. But I do know that that water comes down off of Jones Road and then floods toward the front door. And the tenants that are in there have to get out there with brooms and shovel it away from the front door rather than have it go, go in their, their property. Also, the property where my property touches Mrs. Lucas, which is the one on the far left, she has quite a lake in her front yard after rains. And I don't know if that is from the street or not. I know that then my driveway on that side floods. But in addition, what needs to be looked at is along the backside of Miss Lucas, that then attaches to the backside of the middle square, and then continues onto Ruth, there is quite a river that flows from Miss Lucas's property. It floods her onto Ruth, there is quite a river that flows from Miss Lucas's property. It floods her swimming pool when there are bad rains. And I don't know the source of that water for her, but someone does need to speak with her for sure. I don't know if it's coming off the street and then getting into her backyard, or if it comes from the property that faces onto Reese. I'm unsure of that. But I do know that it flows under her fence, goes onto mine, floods the small building that's attached to the home, as well as, like I said, it comes in from the front. And then, when it goes down toward Dawson's property, it hits that concrete drainage thing that was built on Sunset. And I took a level, and I ran a level right there where it, kind of from where my prop, middle of my property, and then I just ran that level down. And by the time it gets down to that Sunset Trail culvert, it's sloping upward. So there is no lower drainage there. The culvert was placed too high to have that property, all that water that comes from Miss Lucas's, it just can't drain until it reaches a certain depth. Then it crosses over that concrete thing and then can go down the road. In the meantime, then, it backs up onto Ruth's and gives her quite a lake in her front yard. So I think the sources of her problems are not only the street side, but the drainage along the back that's caused by that concrete culvert that was built too high to drain that drainage. And I believe that's a, I think that's a city drainage easement along the back, if I'm not mistaken. But someone does need to talk to Miss Lucas and find out what's the source that floods her swimming pool and her backyard, so that you have a clear picture. It may not just be the road. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, and there have been a few things requested from councilmembers and commitments from staff. Sylvia, would you highlight what you will be doing and bringing back? And then councilmembers, if it doesn't answer requests that you've made this evening, would you raise your hand again, so that we can make sure Sylvia has your needs covered?
So the first thing is bring back ASAP a cost to televise. Carolyn and I have been exchanging messages. There is a higher mobilization fee if we bring folks back, so we're going to get that done pretty quickly. Doesn't look like it needs to be back to the council, but I will at least provide the council with the report. And then Travis and I really need to sit down and look at this cohesively, because Sunset Trail, I believe, was reduced in scope by the Public Works Committee, if not removed. And so not only identifying what the true nature of this is, and maybe it has to be phased out over a period of time, maybe there's a simple solution to resolve some issues pretty quickly in terms of the flooding. I think that's what I have. Travis, did I miss anything? Travis?
No, Sylvia, I think you hit the nail on the head there.
Sylvia, do you know how much we have, either, I know that things are moving around as committees are making recommendations for the next budget, but do you know how much we currently have in the budget for drainage improvements in this area?
I do not. Sunset Trail was due to have some waterline improvements, enhancements for flow and fire protection. And then it was also due to have some street repair done. So I believe there was something in the order of $300,000 or so in the budget. Don't quote me on that. And then, as we looked at drainage and we talked, you know, higher level with Travis, and sort of through everything in the kitchen sink, that's where this number came from. But again, it has not, it has not run all its traps. This really was an information piece to the council.
Councilmembers, did Sylvia cover everything that you expect to come back? This isn't action items. If anybody feels the need, you can take formal action. So far, we've only made, given staff direction for things that Sylvia will bring back at a later date. If there's anything that you want that's more firm, please make a motion. Councilmember Elliott?
Yes. Not so much a question, but a reflection, and maybe a leader question. We heard earlier from the auditors about the establishment of a true capital expenditure fund. I'd like to see how this would have fitted into that, from that point of view. Probably a good example of how it could have benefited from the establishment of that fund, number one. And number two, I just want to raise a point here. Which came first, did the houses or the paving of the road? And I think the answer is the houses were there first, correct? So I just want us to reflect on that. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes, Mayor, I didn't hear the exploration of the previous engineering firm's potential liability on this project, that I'd like to have staff explore. And it hasn't come through Public Works, and I think that it should be on the next Public Works agenda. But, and I pointed that out to Chair McAmel when we had this conversation, and he said it was going to come to the same thing, and he is our resident expert on roads, that we don't have the historical knowledge base here anymore. And so failing that, we need to come back and talk to, get expertise on this issue from the engineers. So I don't have a problem moving forward on the engineering if we feel like we have that in good enough shape. If we need to bring that back, that's fine. So if we do feel like we have enough to move forward on the scope of this project, I'm okay with it moving forward. I would have preferred that it went through Public Works first, but I did talk to the person who would have the most input, and he said that what we needed to do is have information at this point. So if we feel like we have sufficient scope to move forward, that's great, and I'm okay with moving forward only on the engineering. But I also want to know whether there's liability, and that's my first question of the previous engineering firm. So I didn't hear that in the staff report. And I'll make a motion if we feel like we're there.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I'll leave that up to you if you think a motion is necessary. Yeah, so I'll leave that up to you.
I want staff direction on the liability. So I certainly motion that. And if staff feels like we have enough information to proceed on the engineering, I'll make a motion on that.
I'm not clear. Are you making a motion or not?
Well, let me ask Sylvia, do we have enough information, or do we need to bring it back?
Let me, I'll defer to Travis. Travis, is there any further exploration or anything else you need to do within this area?
From a drainage analysis, from my scoping point of view, we're, Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm ready to conduct the drainage analysis that everybody's kind of been talking about, both along Jones Road and the single-family properties here. And I agree, I think that's kind of the next step, is to conduct that analysis to kind of bookend what the problem is, and then identify solutions.
Is this going to come back anyway? That's my other question to staff. Is it going to come back because it needs to come back? If it is, then I'll hold my recommendation and just go with the liability issue. If it's coming back anyway, there's no point moving it forward.
Well, what would come back would be the findings of the investigation.
Investigation? Which investigation, if you wouldn't mind being a little clearer?
If council gives direction to move forward with the engineering, to put the problem in a clearer box, to give alternative solutions, then that motion could be made tonight. That's what Travis is saying. He's ready to proceed forward with the information he has provided us.
I make the motion for purposes of discussion, at the very least. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we proceed on the engineering, and we also look to the liability of the previous engineering firm. And I'll just put that out there for a second.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Medicus?
Second.
Roxy, I feel like the second part of that motion is for you, not Travis, the looking into liability of a previous engineer. And Melissa, step in. Is that a question for legal?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So Roxy, we have a two-part motion here. One, which would be for you to do something.
Yes. I think, and I apologize, I'd been muted earlier. I need to look at the underlying documents and any bonds that may be in play here, and I will evaluate that. And I believe I can get all of that information from Sylvia and Travis.
Right. Councilmember Rosengarden?
It says here in the agenda item that the supporting materials provided will give us a estimated construction cost. There's no cost whatsoever in the backup that I see, and I've read all of this. There's not even a cost estimate as to what the engineering design would be. Travis, do you have something?
It, I'm sorry, sir.
You gave a great scope of work, but, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I remember that. I'm sorry. When I read all of this ahead of time, then, yeah, you gave a scale of what your hours are, but you didn't give us a solid, this is what it's going to cost, $94,915.
Correct, correct. That's the engineering cost. I did have a construction cost that was, and is also in the backup material. I'm panning through the backup material here. Well, Sylvia and I have talked about it one part or the other. Okay, it's towards the bottom of the backup material. It's one of the last pages.
Yeah.
This is, you'll notice there's lots of contingencies in there, because right now we haven't designed anything. I don't, there's a lot of unknowns. So I left myself a little bit of a cushion there. But depending on, as we, as Councilmember Gonzalez has talked about, if some of this stuff shakes out, there's different alternatives we might pursue, and these are what those alternatives might end up costing. We're having to do a face bid and the various ad alternatives that could be put on here.
Councilmember Rosengarden, I had asked Travis to build it with ad alternates, so the council could have a choice. Because in some areas where we were already going to be doing streets, we didn't plan to do full reconstruction. But obviously, if we're going to be doing drainage, council was going to need to make some decisions as to whether we do full-depth reconstruction, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why there's a variety of costs. The engineering is up at the top. It is $92,000. And then there was some geotechnical in that cost as well.
Yep.
So if the motion was made tonight, that is what you are asking, that's what you're okaying to proceed with?
God, I just hate throwing more money. Yeah, that's how I feel. I feel like I'm throwing more money at the same problem that was supposed to be corrected by putting in this sidewalk and doing drainage at the same time. I was told by the staff of Sunset Valley Public Works that they were going to take care of drainage issues at that time. And now here we are, looking at this again. All right, thank you.
Any other comments from councilmembers before we take action on the motion? Councilmember Gonzalez?
I want to withdraw my motion, because I'm with, the discussion was helpful for me, and I'm with Councilmember Rosengarden, that I think the first thing is to have Roxy look at it 90K to redo what we, to just explore redoing what we already said we were going to do in the fix, without even making sure the other people who were supposed to fix this can fix it, feels too much. And that's just to find out. That's not even to fix it. It was supposed to have been fixed in that 200K. And so I want to first explore the Roxy part. So I would like to change my motion to where we just have Roxy look at it first, and see whether or not these people have liability. And I'd like to run it through Public Works at the next meeting. I'd like to defer to them and say what pieces, and have them recommend to council what pieces we think need to move forward on this project, if they do within the budget. Because, and I'd also like to know from staff right now, what's the funding mechanism for this? Is it general fund, or is it a road fund? Those are all questions I have.
The funding is split among, there was water fund for the water line, there was streets, repair and maintenance, and then also drainage.
Okay, so none of it's general fund?
No.
Okay. Well, I'd like, I still would like to amend my motion to have Roxy look at it first, and see if we can get this addressed engineering-wise by the people who created the problem, or who were supposed to have solved it, and then...
Councilmember Gonzalez, can I stop you for a second? Because you initially said with, for me, your motion's withdrawn, and then you said I'm going to make a new motion. Could you just state your new motion, and then we can look for a second?
My new motion is to just do the half that said, send it to Roxy, and send it to Public, and then send it to Public Works for advice.
So could you just word it as a complete motion?
I would like to send this project to Roxy, to see if she can check for liability on the previous company, engineering company. And I would like to send it to Public Works for advice on how the engineering ought to look.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Councilmember Medicus?
Second.
Roxy, is that motion clear for you in terms of what's being asked of you?
Yes, it is.
Councilmembers, do we have any questions or comments on the new motion that stands? Generally speaking, is there anybody in the room, staff or public, who wants to speak to this item before we take action? Councilmember Elliott?
I want to make sure I understand the impact of the motion. So we're essentially saying we do nothing until Roxy examines what the liability is from the previous organization that was charged with doing this. Is that the motion?
No. It's not that we do nothing. If there's anything we can do for staff, it doesn't preclude us from doing something that we can do. But I would like the people, it's 90K, and I would like to make sure that we're not spending it unnecessarily. And not, and having Public Works look at this is not doing nothing. Public Works, Dr. McAmel is a very noted roads person who hasn't had a chance to look at this and make recommendations. And we have a bunch of engineers on the Public Works Committee who have not really looked at this scope. And that's, so I had objection to that anyway. And so I think having Public Works tighten the scope of this, and people with engineering degrees and serious road chops are going to be able to reflect on this if we put it on the agenda. So it isn't nothing to have five engineers glance at the scope and tighten it up before it moves forward. That's not nothing at all.
Councilmember Elliott, are you clear now on what the motion is that you'd be voting on?
I believe I am. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
I just want to say, along with what Councilmember Gonzalez said, is, once you hire another firm to go ahead and engineer what should have been taken care of with the original firm, and then start, proceed down the road of doing the work, they will not warrant their work, if there is any warranty or guarantee that they were mitigating for flooding. So we might want to get with the engineering firm who did the original work and find out if they can come in with a solution a lot less expensive. Of course, they created the mess, I know. So it makes it hard for us to want to work with them. But that would be the first avenue to pursue. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Please raise your hand if you want to speak on this item before we call for the vote. A wait a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Sylvia, if you'd read the vote, once you have it.
Okay, Councilmember Reed's yes, Councilmember Gonzalez, yes, Councilmember Elliott, yes, Councilmember Medicus, yes, Councilmember Rosengarden, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmembers, would please raise your hand if there's somebody who needs me to take a small break. If not, I'm going to keep moving through the agenda. Okay, we are now at item number 10. Sorry, item nine and 10 we covered. So now we are at item number 13. Consider an act on a map for the possible banner locations with deliberation and action. Councilmembers, I sponsored this item. and action. Councilmembers, I sponsored this item because as I sat through the different committee meetings, I, on more than one occasion, heard reference to what they believed council had or had not approved. And so I thought this would be the easiest way to nip it in the bud, which is to ask you guys to create a new, clear motion of where you want the banners that we have purchased. So the green dots are for locations that are, have already been approved by council and whoever has the authority to give approval for the banners to be there. And the yellow are where, and Sylvia, this is where I'll let you take over. Yellow is where I believe were proposed, but we'd be looking for clarification today if those are locations you want the banners. Red would require installation of additional poles. And so if council wanted banners to be in those locations, we would need to have your direction clear by way of action, including the cost to purchase and install those new poles. Sylvia, would you like to add anything?
Yes. So Home Depot Boulevard, pretty clear. We have 50 banners. The banners have arrived this week. So the, the prior motion was along Brody. What is along Brody are Austin Energy, big fat posts, not really suitable for a banner, although we could potentially make it work. Each one of the posts, it's, it's included in your backup, although each post is about $1,000. They are solar powered, so it, and they would be in the median. What is in yellow, Cindy with the Village has given tentative of approval as of this afternoon. We're, we're trying to tighten up the, the total number and installation date. What wasn't included was ERW and going into, into the Jones area. There are existing posts there that used to have banners on them that don't have banners on them anymore. So if we don't get okay from Market Fair Shopping Center, then we would have some extra banners that could go along the ERW component. And then, as council had described, delineating the shopping center boundaries, those red dots really are perfect addition. This is, in a, in a best-case scenario, how many new posts would go. I know the marketing firm hasn't been engaged yet, so that may be a, this may be too preliminary of a discussion. But that does definitely delineate the entrance into the Sunset Valley main shopping districts.
So you say $1,000 approximately, that's just the cost of the pole or that's all in? The cost to use the pole, permit the pole, install the pole?
That's just the cost of the post. The, the right-of-way is ours along Brody, so we'd have to potentially get a traffic control plan from the city of Austin. And then, you know, the digging, it's not a whole lot of concrete, but it definitely is, there's, there's some work, there's some labor that, that needs to be accounted for in that as well.
Okay, and your green, there are two dots on your map, but those two dots, if you're looking at the key, those two green dots represent 14 banners. The yellow dot that you said you now have confirmation as of today has turned green. How many banners does that location make up?
Within, within this particular shopping center, within the Village, we'd be able to do 15 banners. So that's...
So we're now up to 29? We're up to 29 of our 50 banners have been utilized?
Yes.
Okay, so council, that's, I'm looking for a very clean motion tonight that says, green light, install 29 banners that have already been approved by the stakeholders. And then, within the motion, clarify where you want the additional banners to go. If the last shopping center goes from yellow to green, and if it doesn't, where within these other red or yellow dots do you want staff to move forward and install banners? Councilmember Medicus?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I really would not like to see us spend more money on putting up new posts, especially since we don't have a total cost for installation, just an estimated cost on the banners. I mean, sorry, the poles. Because we, we made a commitment of 230K to hire Amper San and Canales to develop our marketing plan and campaign design for the city. And that contract hasn't even been signed yet. And I believe it's coming back to council at the next meeting. So I'm really not in favor of committing any additional funds until we have the results of that project and a cohesive, comprehensive marketing plan for our city. Because I feel like doing, adding more poles at this point would be piecemeal, as I've heard people not wanting to do piecemeal in items before this. So that's just my thoughts.
So Councilmember Medicus, if you were to, not that you are making a motion, but if you were to give direction, it would be to move forward with the green locations, the additional shopping center that turned green today, and then to hold on to enough banners until we get confirmation of that second, that final shopping center. And then would you move forward with ERW, those four yellow dots that are on ERW?
Yes. I think if we don't have enough, if we have more banners, then we have places approved to put them that are currently in existence, then we should use the poles that we already have. And then wait until we have a comprehensive plan before we start putting in poles. And, and I want, I want to see a comprehensive, cohesive plan for the whole city.
Sylvia, do you have an idea of when you'll hear back from the last shopping center?
It should be this week. They were both talking to their management and corporate folks at the latter part of last week. I was hoping to have heard by today, but I've only heard from Cindy.
Because if they say yes, then it, the question becomes moot and must be order additional banners, because you're then looking at 54 locations that have been approved and you only have 50 banners.
Correct.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise new banners because we're going to be looking at a whole new graphics design for the city from the contract we've, we're about ready to sign with Canales. And Amper San, sorry.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
I second what Karen Medicus was proposing and moved on. And...
Why don't you make a motion? Because Karen, Councilmember Medicus didn't form it as a motion. Would you like to form it as a motion?
I would. I move that we put the banners where the green poles already exist and continue down Ernest Robles Row where, again, poles exist. And then once we get the approval from the retail centers, to then go ahead and, and pursue at that locate, those locations. I would like to speak if, after this is get seconded.
Okay. Councilmember Medicus, do you want to second that to open it for discussion?
Yes, I'll second.
Councilmember Rosen could ask for clarification. You're saying move forward and install in the two green locations on this map, and then also in the third shopping center where Sylvia indicated, we received an approval to move forward. So those three locations would get banners ASAP?
Correct.
Correct. And then do we hold off until we hear from the final shopping center before we install anymore? Or would you want staff to go ahead and start installing on the city existing locations that you mentioned in your motion?
Install on existing city locations. Now, here's something I wanted to get clarification on. If we already have existing banners on these poles, why do we need to wait for new permission if we're simply switching out the banners to different lengths and different designs? We already had permission once before. All we're doing is switching it. Do we really need to ask for permission again?
For ERW within the shopping centers.
Whichever poles that we've already got banners on. All we're doing is switching.
I think that was the question about the design specifically on ERW. And then Home Depot, yes, there are, there's banners here along Home Depot Boulevard. There's banners on ERW and sort of, and right here sprinkled throughout. Don't have any issue with Home Depot. Don't have any issue right here. Won't have any issue right here where the cursor is. The question remains here on ERW and then when we get a response from Market Fair.
Okay. Again, if Market Fair already has some banners up on some poles there, and we're simply switching them, why do we have to go back and ask them for permission?
Not, I don't know. I asked for permission, and I haven't gotten a, it's okay to swap out your simple banners.
Okay. Okay, so you're not sure why we're asking for, you're just being kind and going ahead and asking permission?
I, I was being kind, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sylvia, as we're looking at these other yellow dots, are those, so some of your yellow dots represent a grouping? For the ones that are on the street, are those representative of groupings also?
Yes. Within Home Depot Boulevard, that's a grouping. There's about 12 banners. There are some existing banners that are on these areas that are, you know, it used to be a two-band pole, and we're just kind of reassemble and make sure all of the poles have appropriate banners.
So my, my question's about the, so the green, I understand. There's two green dots that represents 14 banners. Can you take your cursor to each of the yellow and indicate exactly how many banners each one of those dots represents?
Yes. Here, within the Village Shopping Center, that's going to be 15 banners. It says 18 here. We've got tentative approval for 15 banners here. And then this, each one of the yellow dots on ERW is not a grouping. That's an individual banner.
Okay. If we take the green, 14, the other shopping center, 15, and then you're saying those final four represent four individual poles?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rosengarden, I heard you mention two roads, but there's only four poles. Is there, are there additional poles that I'm either getting lost in translation between Sylvia and Councilmember Rosengarden? Or is those four, those represent the four that you're thinking of, Councilmember Rosengarden?
Okay, let's, let's go back and try this again. From what I'm hearing is that the committee said to put banners on Brody and the shopping centers. So they wanted to wait on Ernest Robles before we put banners on there. Is there a reason for waiting on Ernest Robles if we can get the message out? Because people drive up and down Ernest Robles and go shopping there also. And you can see, there's 12 posts on Home Depot Boulevard, and there are, God, it's hard to read some of this.
Let me see them, listen.
The other green post, how many are, are on Brody?
That's, that's a two, that's a two-band on location, I believe.
That's just two. Okay, so there's only going to be two of them on Brody, and there's going to be 12 on Home Depot Boulevard? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Oh, my.
Well, it's 12 on, it's 12 on Home Depot Boulevard, two on Brody, and then an additional...
15 here.
15 in the Village Shopping Center.
In the Village, okay.
And now we're up to...
29.
And then if you add the four on ERW?
And there's more than four posts on ERW, but we can reconfigure the existing banners so that there would only be four banners on ERW.
Councilmember Rosengarden, that, and then we would wait to see how many we can put in Market Fair, and that eats up to 50. And then to the point that Councilmember Medicus made, we're not going to order any more banners. We're going to use what we can. But for the committees and others, they can know that we're not going to address installing banners in any of those red locations.
Right, at this time, yeah. I mean, it sure would be nice to have that, but to take on the expense at this time, not, I don't want to do that.
I agree. I think I'd prefer to see the marketing firm tell us what our true logo or branding should be. And that those would be, to me, more ideal than within the shopping center. Because once people are parking, you've already captured them for shopping. I'm more interested in capturing people on the road.
Correct, correct.
And defining the perimeters of the city.
Yeah. Agreed.
Any additional, oh, I see, Councilmember, Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I just want to make a comment, and it's really for the marketing firm, but I would also look at the color of our post. They're all painted green, and particularly along ERW there, you can't even see them when you're walking along because they blend in with the background so much. So if the idea is to promote the city, we may want to look at making the post a little more visible. So, but that, I do think that's a deferment to the marketing firm, but just a comment. Thanks.
Councilmember Ellet?
Yes, thank you. I was going to make a suggestion to the motion maker that just helps me clarify. And I would ask the motion makers to consider this, and I assure us a change, but clarification. The motion to authorize staff to go ahead and deploy up to a maximum of the 50 banners that are already being purchased and in inventory, provided that none of the deployments results in the cost of a purchase of a new pole.
I think that makes it more confusing. I think where we're at is clearer to me, and also to the committees, which is the yellow and green dots indicate where banners will go. The red dots are not where we will be putting banners.
Okay, I just don't want us to get tied up again needing another council meeting to, maybe I'm overthinking this, to, to have to discuss about deploying four banners. That's all I'm saying. The banner issue's been going on a long time. We just need to get them out there. I don't want to include any...
Yeah, and I, and I sponsored this because I was sitting in the committee meetings, and it was clear to me that there was conflicting comments from committee members. And part of the confusion was them trying to clarify what council had approved. So this solves my issue, which is, this motion makes it clear to me, we have only 50, we're not ordering more, we're not installing poles, and we're going to install all 50 in the yellow and green locations until they run out.
I, I'm okay with that. If, if staff is clear as to what needs to happen, I think they are. I think, I'm okay with that. We need to get them out there.
Sylvia, how, how quickly can you, since you now have, have them in stock, how quickly could we start installing them?
Within the Village, I need to coordinate with Cindy. Along the others, I will coordinate with Carolyn, but I don't anticipate it taking more than a week. I certainly know they will not be up in time for the 23rd shop local.
So what is shop local? I've heard, you, you've mentioned that to me a couple times. I don't, is that something that we've published as a city?
There is a CED and a group of folks worked on a ad campaign for July the 23rd encouraging Sunset Valley residents to shop local, eat local from 5:30 to 8 o'clock.
Did that actually get published or sent? Because I, I mean, I'd seen a draft of it, but I hadn't actually seen that it was...
They published it on a, a non-city Facebook page. We're going to send out on iContact. But there was a request to print and distribute to every resident within the city. Obviously, that was cost prohibitive, so we're going to do a digital blast.
You're talking about tomorrow?
The 23rd, Thursday.
Thursday, okay. So we're publishing for an event that's one day away?
Well, it's not necessarily an event. It's encouraging people, it's encouraging our local folks to eat and shop local between those hours. There isn't a, per se, one place they're going to gather.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Mayor, I find that a little disturbing that we're, that we are promoting a quasi-city event during a pandemic. I just, that didn't really even get city approval. I just, I don't know. It just processed that way, that way causes me a little concern. So I'll just put that out there.
Do we have any other councilmembers who want to speak before I move to public comment? Lisa Versace?
Hey, I just wanted to let everybody know that if you do put them on ERW, that'll eat up 22 of your banners. And the whole purpose of this was to refresh the shopping area. The total is like 50 in the shopping area.
Wait, Lisa, to, Lisa, the number that Sylvia just gave us is four. So there would be four on ERW.
Yeah, that's, want to have three different banners on ERW. If you want to have three different ones. She's only referring to the empty posts, of which there are a few gaps. And it doesn't really make that big of a difference because you can barely see them because of the leaves on the trees there. But the ones in the shopping mall, total, like, if you're not even including the double ones, it's like almost up to 50. And so you're going to eat up 22 on ERW if you decide to use... And so, you're going to eat up 22 on ERW if you decide to use these there. Just wanted to draw your attention.
But the motion and what Sylvia clarified is not that it would be 24. It's that it would be four and only in the four locations that are noted on the map.
I just think that...
So, four banners total.
My opinion, that just looks really bad, adding a third banner to an already... Every other banner, I don't know. It just, it doesn't look...
So, I'll leave that for the motion maker in a second, if you want to respond to that or change your motion. Councilmember... Councilmember Rosengarden?
Okay, so, Lisa, if I understand correctly, you were thinking that we're going to be 22, and there's going to be four. And then, when they come in with a new banner going on Ernest Robles, you're saying they're going to be conflicting, look, marketing ideas? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, there's already two different styles of banners right now. And there's a blue one, and then there's the city emblem. I think if you add a third one, it's really going to make it look junky along that. It's going to be three different banners. And I just don't think that looks...
I'm hearing you. And the other thought that I'm wondering is, is there going to be a fourth one when we get Canelli's up and running, and they're our marketing team? Are they going to come up with new and different ideas? So, you're saying we're not taking any banners down that are up right now. We're adding four on Ernest Robles. We're going to have three different designs on Ernest Robles. But the others in the shopping center and on Brody and Home Depot, we're going to take down all the old ones and put up all new. So, it's all going to be one... No? So, help me understand.
No. So, there are way more than 12 locations on Home Depot. There's way more than four locations on ERW. I don't think it's going to look any more junky than some posts that have one banner and some posts have a hanging banner, or posts that have banner arms that don't have any banners on them. So, the plan is to consolidate, put the banners that match with the banners that match, and clean this up. There are... Lisa's right. There are blue banners, green banners, city emblem banners, but they're in a... There's no cohesive anything to ERW. Along the shopping centers, it's the same thing. There are posts that have arms that don't have any banners on them. And same thing on Home Depot Boulevard. There are posts that are missing banners, and then there are posts that only have one banner. So, we're going to consolidate it, clean it up, and make sure that every post or some reasonable pattern thereof that we're intending has a banner on it.
Okay, I'm going to try and summarize what you just said. What you just said is we are... That a post with no banner on it looks as bad as a post with three different banners on the street. I disagree, because if there's nothing there, you're not seeing anything, and you don't even get your eye drawn to a post that has nothing on it. So, are we... To clarify, just yes or no? Are we taking down the old banners and putting up new banners? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, so we're going to keep old banners up and put new banners with them and have conflicting looks on the same street? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Now, councilmembers, you see why I've sponsored this item. So, I'm looking for a clean motion that tells staff where you want the 50 new banners that we have produced. Where do you want those 50 banners installed? Councilmember Rosengarden?
I move that we put banners, take down old banners, all of them, and put up new banners on Brody, Homestead Lane, the shopping centers first. Use up all the banners within the shopping centers first. Then, if there's any leftover, to put them on Ernest Robles.
And so, that motion, if we're looking at our map, and when you say Brody, you don't mean Brody where there's red dots. You mean Brody where there's a green dot.
Only existing poles, no new poles, yes.
So, the green dot, the yellow dot would get first... Green and yellow in shopping center on Brody are first priority. Second priority, if there are banners left over, is to go on ERW?
Only leftovers go on ERW, and all old banners should become... Should come down. We should not have conflicting banners out there at this time.
And...
My opinion.
Thank you. That... We now have a new motion on the floor. Do we have a second to open it for discussion? Councilmember... Councilmember Medicus?
Second.
Second. Do the maker of the motion, the second, and staff at a minimum, as a starting point, do you understand the motion?
Yes, take down old banners. Start on Home Depot, the Village, whatever we can on Brody. Once Market Fair approves or disapproves, if there's anything left over, move to ERW.
Correct.
And in moving to ERW, the thing that has changed from her previous motion to this one is that the... And Councilmember Rosengarden, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion now indicates that any existing banners on ERW be removed, so that anything added would make it so that there's only one banner type on ERW.
Correct, because when you're used to a billboard, so if you keep the old up, you drive by them, and you don't even notice them anymore. It's like a billboard. You drive by it every day, every day. You don't even notice it. But once a new billboard is put up, you notice it. But if you have the old there, it's going to be confusing with the new. Take down all the old. Just put up the new. Thank you.
Councilmembers, do we have any comments, questions? Lisa, do you want to weigh in now that we have a cleaner motion?
Yeah, I really think that we could just saturate the shopping malls with these, and it's really going to help to refresh the shopping area, and that's what they were intended for. And I think that that'll serve the purpose. And then, you can let the marketing firm redesign all other banners going forward with a super-nice residential feel in the residential areas and whatever other branding opportunities we have. Thank you.
Please raise your hand if you want to speak to this before I call for council to vote. Okay, councilmembers, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Submit your votes via chat so that Sylvia can read them in. Sylvia, you just sent me a text message that says Penny wants to speak. Penny's not even listed on my dashboard. So, is it...
I believe she's calling in, but she's... When you mute all, they're all muted. There's no way to unmute that. Without unmuting everybody.
Penny, so, is she... Does she want to speak, or is she good with us taking the vote?
Penny says ERW is important. Our goal is to get authorization and draw attention to our shopping centers. ERW is a main entry point.
So, we... Sylvia, are you clear on the motion, which is you're going to saturate the green locations and the two... And the shopping center, two yellow locations, and that we're only going to move to ERW if there's banners left over? And the way that the maker and the second have indicated is that if we do that, it would involve taking existing banners down first?
Correct.
Okay. And if that means we only have one or two banners left, I don't really know why we would do that, because it seems like we'd end up with less on ERW than more. Is that correct, Sylvia? How many banners are currently installed on ERW?
Way more than four. I can't give you an exact amount right now. Approximately 15 to 20.
Yeah, so if we take down 15 to 20 to install two, I don't know that we've benefited ourselves in any way. Councilmembers, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And Sylvia, would you please read the vote once you have it?
Okay, Councilmember Rosengarden, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Elliott, yes. I... Councilmember Gonzalez, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We now have two final items, and councilmembers, at 9 o'clock, I'll look for the motion. Otherwise, we would need to table one of these items. The next item is 14, Presentation and Direction to Staff Regarding Impact Fees with Deliberation in Action. And Councilmember Rosengarden is the sponsor on this, so I will allow Councilmember Rosengarden and/or Sylvia to take the lead.
This item stems from the last discussion of giving a refund to the Brody Homestead regarding whether it was an impact fee and whether it was a mitigation fee. It was clear at the time of the Brody Homestead refund that because the way the item was framed and intended to provide some relief from the impact to the drainage, that it was an impact fee. And so, Councilmember Rosengarden asked me to prepare a presentation regarding impact fees, but more importantly, the longer term of how those things could benefit the city of Sunset Valley. So, impact fees have long been regulated by the state of Texas, and they are primarily the tool that is used in very fast-growing areas. That's not necessarily the case in Sunset Valley, but that doesn't mean it would not have a use. So, first of all, to go through the impact fees, it is a fee paid by a developer. And I need to stress the term developer, because a developer could also be a home builder. It's anybody that is developing a piece of property. And they're paying for their long-term impact to a water, a wastewater, a drainage, a road, or a flood control system. You heard Councilmember Rosengarden mention earlier, when a developer comes in, they're only addressing their subdivision. We have off-site impacts as well in development world, where they do have to take into account larger basins. And if there are things that need to be oversized, there are other ways and methods within the codes that allow us to do that. But in order to get to any of those places, there are things that the council has to do, and we have to do them in a methodical way. All of these things are heavily regulated because they are financing mechanisms. Cities borrow money against them. Cities and developers partner together and either have a bond mechanism or some kind of lending mechanism that can pay the long-term installation costs of what is sometimes very expensive infrastructure. So, the pre-planning for a... For an impact fee, and I'm sorry, I'm skipping over pretty quickly. There's a lot of steps involved, but the very first thing is to establish an advisory committee. In my mind, that's going to be a component of the Public Works Committee and also the Budget and Finance Committee. We need a capital improvement plan, and we also need some basic land use assumptions. Now, the city has an existing land use map, and we also have a future land use map. Those land use maps should be visited frequently, more frequently than we have visited them. And all of our capital improvements should be based on those land use assumptions. For example, any changes that we know are coming within the Tony Burger Center and those kinds of things, we should be upsizing and/or making appropriate sizing to our infrastructure to accommodate what may happen there. So, the public meetings need to happen regarding the capital improvement plan and the land use assumptions, and any modification to the future land use maps. So, that is a very heavily regulated meeting format that happens in zoning commission meetings. And so, we have notice requirements and public comment requirements. We have to have a review time for public input. That's normally 30 days, where things have to stay out. Then, the council, again, has additional meetings. The council and the zoning commission, normally a joint meeting, where we discuss the plan and the land use assumptions. And if there's any negatively impacted property owners, for example, that want to challenge any land use assumptions, those are the portions within to do it. The council and the zoning commission adopt or reject the plan and the land use assumptions. And then, we move on to big, system-wide assumptions. If particular corridors, for example, are going to be formulated for commercial, then, you know, what are the drainage impacts? What are the downstream flooding impacts? And those are the things we begin to put numbers to when we start to think about assessing an impact fee. The issue with the Brody Homestead was not only the mechanics of how that one was put together, but the longer-term impact that the Brody Homestead would have had on the drainage system, because it was sort of a double dip, the way it was couched in the reports. We... The council would then establish a proposed impact fee ordinance that has to live out there for public comment for 30 days. The advisory committee then has to write a written report, and it's filed at the public hearing. And then, there's an additional waiting period, so we publish, and then there's 90 days. So, even in the best-case scenario, this is about an 18-month to 24-month process. Now, I was asked... I was asked, how could it impact Sunset Valley? Well, right now, there isn't a whole lot of giant development potential for Sunset Valley. We don't have hundreds and hundreds of acres that could potentially be developed. However, however, the shopping center areas, as they transition, anything that may happen on the uplands or anything along our particular corridors, if we don't have the appropriate methods to charge and collect, we are at a disadvantage when it comes to development speak. If I need to get an additional road, for example, or Sterns Lane comes to mind. If the developer was going to have a negative impact on Sterns Road, there could have been some requirements to widen or to improve Sterns Road to accommodate the additional traffic that particular development would have had on Sterns. Again, assuming Sterns was ours, or we had a better partnership with the city of Austin. More than likely, any development that comes in has to not only address their water, but again, any downstream flood controls. We don't have any appropriate controls specific to an impact fee within our development code right now. So, in order to get started, I would need direction from the council to move that forward with the staff, with Planning Commission, getting an advisory committee started to move the impact fee discussion forward.
Everybody now needs to wake up and tell Sylvia if they have questions. This, as Sylvia and I discussed today, this may not seem like great timing, just because we're trying to get through their stuff, and it's the end of an agenda. But later down the line, having some new legislation, city legislation could be very helpful in councilmembers' residence and developers', applicants knowing better boundaries of what we should or shouldn't be doing, so that we don't have... Run into the issues we just did with Dan Ross. Councilmember Medicus?
I think we should embark on this process, especially since it's going to be a long process. But I think we do need it so that we protect ourselves. I believe we're going to see, you know, maybe not in the next 18 months, but we're going to see in the future some different types of development or redevelopment, and we need to be putting pieces in place to address that, be able to handle that.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
I was hoping Karen was going to make the motion, but since she's not...
Me too, and I almost was going to go to her to do it, but I thought, since you were the sponsor, that I should let you speak before I started poking around for a motion.
To be the second.
I move to establish an advisory committee to start the pre-planning for an impact fee.
And Karen, you second that?
Yes, I'll second that for discussion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Elliott? Councilmember Elliott, are you wanting to leave us in suspense?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was going to make that motion, actually, but with a slightly different... What threw me is make the motion to form an advisory committee. I think what I'm comfortable with is saying, we make the motion to move forward on the process... we make the motion to move forward on the process of putting this into place, understanding it could be as long as an 18-month timeframe. I would like to know along the way, and I wouldn't hold up my vote based on this, what we expect the legal cost to be for this. I understand that's, you know, how big is a breadbox-type question. But I'd like to get just a question, just a... If nothing else, we can budget accordingly, what the legal cost would be for this. I don't know if it's, you know, small, large, or in-between. I have no idea on that. But I support the motion to move forward with this.
So, we have a motion. So, you're telling us you support the motion? Councilmember Ellet?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah. Can someone clarify to me the advisory committee on that? That's my only question.
That's the first step. That is the very, very first step.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Rosen Garden and Councilmember Medicus, you're the motion-maker in a second. You can both speak.
What I would ask is, can the advisory committee be the council? Or does it need to be a committee separate from any other committee and council?
No, it does not have to be a separate committee. In fact, you may also include external stakeholders.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments on this topic or the motion on the floor?
This is second. Karen, yeah, that was my thing for discussion, was establishing a committee. I'm not sure we need to establish another committee. I would be fine with council being the responsible entity. And I like the idea of potentially adding some outside perspectives.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I think that we go ahead and move forward and proceed on it, and then get advisory input from all the relevant committees to come back to us. Because I imagine zoning will have it. I imagine a lot of people will have it. So, we float this through all the committees that need to have input as, you know, a first step. Because we can establish council as the committee and then ask for input from all the relevant committees. I also want to point out that we're talking about doing development when we have not even a single development person besides the city administrator. So, I will point that out as we move forward.
Councilmember Reed, I saw that you put your hand down. If you were wanting to speak, if you'd please raise it again. Councilmembers and public? Are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I would agree that I think council should be the body with some experts. I think that's a good suggestion, and I would agree with this motion. Thanks.
Okay, councilmembers. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Please submit your vote via chat, so that we have it in the record. And Sylvia, if you would, please read it back.
Okay. Councilmember Reed, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Ellet, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Could I please have a motion to extend us past nine, so that we can complete everything on tonight's budget? I mean, sorry, on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Medicus?
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to table item number 15 and end our meeting at nine o'clock for a change, because I really think this is just discussion. And I'd like council to have time to really think about it and discuss it, rather than doing it at the last part of the meeting.
Okay. You saw the agenda for the fourth, right?
They could go on the next meeting after that even.
Okay, okay. So, this could go... Sylvia, what's the meeting after the fourth?
The 18th.
18th.
And Councilmember Medicus, that's not too late for you in terms of where you wanted this to be positioned in our overall budget discussion?
Well, if we did any of the pieces, we might want to have the discussion about our comfort with using the reserve. Item number four on the questions.
Sylvia, what was the date that you gave just now?
August the 18th, which would be when your first budget discussion is held.
Yeah, so Councilmember Medicus, I don't want to talk you out of what you're doing, just to make sure you're aware of the calendar. So, if we bump it to the 18th, that's our first budget hearing. So, that's going to be a meeting where we already know we're going to be having probably at least an hour or more of budget hearing and discussion for adoption of the next budget.
Okay.
So, I thought that you might want...
I withdraw my motion, and let's make a motion to continue the meeting.
We have a motion to continue the meeting to get through this last item. Do we have a second for that? Councilmember Gonzalez?
She's muted, Mayor.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
She's self-muted.
Well, we're waiting to see if...
Hello?
Now, we can hear you.
I'd like to... It's funny how they go back and forth. I'd like to have just a five-minute break, but I'm happy to second.
Great. We can do that. Councilmembers, please vote in favor, aye. Opposed, nay. Sylvia, let me know if we have a majority to extend.
We do. Councilmember Reed, Rosen Garden, Gonzalez, and Medicus voted yes.
Thank you. And Councilmember Medicus, I also... This way, if there is potentially any direction, even if it's small, it might be something that's relevant to the last budget meeting, the last two budget meetings, which is this Thursday and next Thursday.
I agree, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't want to seem like I was pushing us to go late, because... Councilmembers, we're going to take a quick break and reconvene at 9:05 to finish our last agenda item for this evening. Sylvia, do we have everybody, all of our councilmembers, still on?
All of our councilmembers are here. Yes.
Great. Okay, so this is our last item of the evening. Discussion and direction on budget process for COVID-19 recovery with deliberation in action. And Councilmember Medicus and Gonzalez are the co-sponsors, so I will allow both or either of you to lead this and pull staff in as you see, as you deem necessary. And I'll unmute both of you. So, Councilmember Gonzalez, you are unmuted, as well as Councilmember Medicus.
Go ahead, Karen.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. So, in sitting through a lot of the committee meetings as we're dealing with this pandemic issue, I realized that there's not a lot of discussion that the council's been able to have about some of these issues. And I wanted to bring us back just briefly to our council retreat at the beginning of the year, where we came up with the three main categories, or buckets, if you will. Maintain and protect financial stability, to improve the stewardship of city assets, and to improve accountability and the balance of administration and political process. Now, we had no idea in November that we were going to be dealing with a worldwide pandemic. So, understanding that, we have a lot of things I think we could benefit by discussing about how we move forward with all of this. You know, what was important in that retreat? Where are we now? Where do we want to be? I think three, four, five, and six are really key issues at this point in time with the budget. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. So, I don't know if we want to go through these or if people have had a chance to really think about them, but maybe we start at number three, or maybe number two.
I think... Let me go ahead and just follow up on what Karen's saying. We don't really have an agenda with this item. We really wanted people to have an opportunity, particularly budget and finance, to hear our thinking. And we hadn't had a chance to really do that. And so, that is the point. We tried to outline all of the questions that kind of could get us to think about this as we came to this and get us on the same page for the conversation. It isn't really meant to limit, but to inspire a conversation. Is that a fair assessment, Karen?
Yes, yes.
Okay. There we go.
The virtual discussion.
Well, I'm happy to start off, but I just would rather... We actually wanted to listen more than we wanted to talk.
Exactly. So, maybe we start off with, as we plan for COVID-19 recovery, with the budget looming ahead of us, what benchmarks do we want to set for rebuilding the city's infrastructure? I'll just throw that out there.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, you're self-muted. There you go.
So, my... The one I wanted to talk about was number four. What is our tolerance for use of our reserves? My tolerance is very low. We haven't even built up the reserves since paying for the city facilities. And then, we're talking about using what little reserves we have at this time. I know that we have built them up rapidly, or were before this happened. But nonetheless, the way I would run the city if I had total control is as soon as there's a tornado that hits your shopping center, is cut all expenses as much as you possibly can. Only do what you have to do. Do not touch reserves unless there's an absolute have-to. Because what if a second tornado came? So, this is our tornado. And so, my tolerance for the reserves would be very low. I would not want us to dip into reserves too soon. That's my answer. On the plan for recovery on COVID-19, what benchmarks do we set for rebuilding the city infrastructure? If there was a way, as we're doing the budget... If there was a way, as we're doing the budget and discussion, is cut these services, et cetera. Well, what if, what if our financial outlook is looking better than what we projected in the budget? Then my discussion was with another council member was, well then, couldn't we do a percentage? If the percentage revenue starts to be 25% greater than our budgeted revenue projections, then do 25%. Expenses can increase equal to the revenue increase, so that you never go over. But if you're doing a balanced budget, can you do that? Do we have to sit with the budget exactly the way we projected to be up till September 31 of next year? Or can we do a budget that says, but if revenue increases, then we can start, equal to that, a percentage increase on services or expenses? That question would go to our city administrator.
So the budget doesn't have the elasticity. We need, we need a financial policy, first of all. And when you create a financial policy that talks about that elasticity, I think I said that probably even in my interview when I first came on, when that policy's written, then the budget can follow suit. We're required to turn in a balanced budget, revenues and expenses, even if some of those revenues mean drawing down reserves. But if the financial policies enumerate, the first thing you're going to do is this, cut expenses. The second thing you're going to do is this. And then at some point, we get to the point of reserve, then yes, then there's, it's a matter of just some administrative controls within, that the council, yes, ultimately has to bless us. But what I bring back to the council is exactly what was enumerated in this financial policy. So I have no question as to what's expected of me or the staff in getting the budget to be healthy.
Okay. So basically, once we're done with the budget, we've vetted it, that's done. We should not then expect, because the policy has not been changed, for it to be a floating budget.
Correct. Not, well, let me caveat that with, that's not the way how Sunset Valley has done it typically. In, in, in a lot of cities, Austin included, there is discussion about, you know, when there's a constriction of revenues, or you have some event that has reduced revenues, immediately, one of the first policies is freezing staff. You know, freezing those non-essential services, those kinds of things. And then, you know, you look for revenue expansion possibilities also. We're kind of a little bit behind the eight ball in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
So I had a question on number three. So as we plan for COVID recovery, what benchmarks do we set for rebuilding the city infrastructure? What infrastructure do you mean?
So from my perspective, I was looking at number five for that, the health and safety items that we suspended, or are doing at a minimal amount. And one of the things that I'm very concerned about, having worked many fire disasters around this country, is wildfire mitigation. And so how do, you know, how do, we put that on hold, it's suspended right now, and we're coming into the really dry part of our year, so that's a concern I have.
Okay, so not, not infrastructure like water, sewer drainage. You're talking about the mechanics of the city operations?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Maybe I used the wrong word there.
No, no, no. I immediately go to water and sewer.
Personnel or workforce infrastructure contracting out. But what do we need to do to make sure that we take care of those things that we put on hold that are important for health and safety?
I've got a question here. When we talk about the reserves, well, let's go ahead and get an update on that. Because our reserves have changed because of the way that we've dropped our budget. So can somebody give me a number? Because I expect that we're actually in excess of our reserve goals at this point because of the fact that we've dropped our budget. What, how many months of reserve do we currently have?
I'll give Ray Jean an opportunity to answer that, but technically, yes, you're absolutely correct. The budget is restricted, so the reserve amount would be greater than the month projection that it was. But council has not fully adopted the budget amendment yet. So we're still technically in the prior budget. But Ray Jean, do you, can you give a number as to what that reserve amount is at this time?
I don't, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I do know Susanna might have it if she's still on here. But I know we're at, at the 12%, I mean 12-month, if not more. Because we haven't been spending anything, we haven't, our, you know, it's all been cut. So we're probably at that 12, if not more, 12-months. So we are not, we are not anywhere near being, you know, have a, to me, we don't have a low reserve. We're over the 12-months as of right now. Now, we start spending more money or whatever like that, that number might go down, but not, it won't be a significant change.
And I want to point out, just from the audit, and not that I disagree with councilmember Rosengarden, I'm not a fan of significantly depleting the reserves, but I want to be reasonable about it. And I really want to point out that our reserves are currently the $11 million, right? Because we actually have a fair amount of money tucked away. And, and if we go forward, we may have to change our policies because we may not get to have the luxuries of that. We just don't know what the future's going to look like. So I agree, I'm not, I'm not in a hurry to draw down a lot of our reserves, but I, but I think that we need to be flexible that way. But I'm going to be quiet now that I've thrown that piece of information out, and then I'll let other people talk.
If I can interject something here, we don't have $11 million in the general fund reserve. It's, it's, that's, that's would be the street reserve plus the general fund. So yeah, and I was speaking about the general fund reserve.
Yeah, but I just wanted to broaden that in terms of our concept. Because if you're looking at it as an audit differently than we do, those are things that other cities typically don't have as much of as we do. And I, and I, yeah, 12, we're probably at a little over 12-months is what my guess would be of what our reserves are, so that we've actually technically fulfilled our reserve amount. But, and actually done what we didn't think we could do. But, but other cities don't generally have the amount of other funds that we do that I just think that should be in our discussion, just so that people breathe a little bit as they talk about it. And I'm not necessarily in favor of touching any of it, but just, just like to have all the pieces of information on the table.
Susanna, do you have the reserve amount?
Yeah, I have. So for general fund, it's 5.2 million. And that doesn't include committed or restricted funds, and then we also have non-committed funds. So the total that we have saved in the general fund currently is about 8 million. And then for total across all of the funds, it's 23.6 million.
Got it. Thank you.
And that's estimated.
I think the other thing to point out for our city that is a real problem for us, we don't have debt.
Hello? I think councilmember Reeves.
Yes, object a little bit?
Yes.
Hello?
Okay, councilmember Reeves.
Thank you, thank you. So a couple of thoughts here. One is with our reserve, you know, the 5.2 million is, is right at a year's 12-months or so. Now, the budget that's being planned is at a, the bronze level is a 25% reduction. And that budget will come in somewhere around 3.7. And so I believe our policies would say that it would have to have, as our reserve would be 3.7 million or so. And that then would mean that our reserve would be like 1.4 months, one year and four months' worth that we would have. So our reserve is very healthy, so that's, that's really good news. Now, one of the things that we voted, or the budget committee, budget and finance committee suggested, and we took their suggestion, was not to make the transfers, the subsidy transfers to the utility fund at the end of the year, that we would cut that out. I think we should visit that, I think we should look at that, because that's also into our utility infrastructure. I think there is money to do that, so I would, one, make that recommendation. Two, I want to revisit this, this thought we had a little bit earlier. I couldn't get my thought. If we plan a budget, let's say at 25, now when our expenses go over, we make a budget amendment. If our revenues go over, can we just make a revenue, a budget amendment to include those revenues? So that's the question.
So any, I'm sorry.
Yes, those are my two questions, and my, and the separate.
So I didn't get the first part of the question. It sounded almost like a Star Wars phone call. The second part of the question I got was, if we had increased revenues, could we make a budget amendment to include those revenues?
So the first, the first part was the subsidy. I think we, so go ahead. I'm sorry.
So again, I think the first part of your question was on subsidies. Could we wait to do the subsidies at the end of the year?
Yes, we normally do that, don't we?
No, Ray Jean does them probably at the six-month mark, and then she does them a couple times a year. But yes, there's nothing to say it can't wait until the latter part of the year. The interesting thing about subsidies as well is we set an amount, and we transfer that amount whether that amount is needed or not. And so that would also be a financial policy to make adjustments to only transfer what those utility funds should need. And again, Sunset Valley's in a unique position. In normal cities, utility funds are enterprise funds. They actually make money, and they contribute to the general fund, and contribute to keeping the tax rate low. In terms of the second question, any adjustments to revenues or expenses beyond the budget needs to come back to the council for a budget amendment. So if we planned for $3.8 million in revenue, and we came in at $4.2 million of revenue, in order to spend that additional $400,000, I need to come back to the council. Not necessarily so for expenses. I can always spend less than the budget without an amendment, but I can't spend more without an amendment.
Right. So the ideal way to do it is get our financial policies in order. But we do have a mechanism now, if, you know, those policies may take a while to get done, but we do have a mechanism now that we can adjust as we go along, correct?
Yes. Councilmember Rosengarden and Medicus, yourself muted.
So when I asked earlier if you could have a floating budget, and you said we couldn't because of the policy wasn't in. But if, what councilmember Reeves just asked is, if our revenue is higher than the projected revenue, we could bring it back to council, and we could do an amendment, and we could spend, not that we want to. We could spend that revenue only if we absolutely needed to take on an expense and get something taken care of. So.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought that, I thought your question was, could, could we do it ourselves without coming back to the council? No, it always has to come back to the council.
Always has to come back to council, yes. Every amendment that goes to, even a budget that doesn't change on revenue comes back to council. But I was wondering if we could set a policy to where, once income comes up a certain percentage, then we can take on a certain percentage of a project. If revenue came up 25% from projections, we could then take on 25% more projects that need to get done, and so on. Need, not want, need.
Yes, presented back to the council, presented back to the council, yes. And the way I would structure a budget like that is I would, we'd create the budget, and we'd sort of do it like an engineering contract, as much as I hate to say that, with an ad alternate. So if revenues came up a certain percentage, within that first alternate budget would be to fund this particular project, and so on and so forth. So that everybody pretty much knows ahead of time, this is the longer-term plan. And so there, that we've really vetted projects for need, and not necessarily, you know, a pet project that came up.
Right. It's kind of like what we're already doing. We're talking the bronze program. And then in budget, they're already talking, well, what if our revenues are a little higher? We might consider this program, which is the silver. So they're handpicking a few projects that are listed in the silver program that are needs, not absolute wants. But we could put them down, kick them down the road another year or two, or we could start working on them now to finish them up in 2021, 22, 22-year. So that should be done.
Right, and we also need to be looking at what fund they come out of.
Correct, correct. Okay, that really helped.
I'm going to hop in here, and I'm going to, because we're talking a lot about projects, and I'm going to talk about people. I'm going to go to item number seven. And, and in terms of needs, in my opinion, I think there's certainly a lot of worthwhile projects that we should look at. But these are harder to think about in a, in a percentage way, because these are people. And, and the services of people, if you look at this list, pretty much all of this has gone over to the job description of the city administrator right now, because it's, they're holes. And, and that's an unreasonable thing to add to her job description. And so I have concerns about that. We haven't had a floodplain administrator since Sarah was gone. And for those of us who live in the floodplain, you know, we get a discount on our insurance. And I'm concerned that that's not being addressed, and I certainly hope that gets covered in the next presentation. But all those skill sets, including the fire wise, which was on that, need to be covered. And they're currently in the box of the city administrator, who's already over, over-scheduled with all we have going on. We lost construction supervision, and if you listen to the public works meeting, you will hear that we have a lot of concern, and all, and all the engineers spoke to that, about running $2 million worth of projects without having someone free to look at that. And our public works department is stretched. And then, of course, they'll also say that they need some techs. And so that's very high on the list. So right there, first on my list, is a part-time person, this councilmember Rosengarden suggested. And maybe that, that person can also have a floodplain administration component to them. And they can be supervising the $2 million of projects that we're talking, just under $2 million of projects we're talking about, depending on how big this other one comes. I think we do need to get those techs to public works. I think it's a dangerous situation to have as few people as we have there, which I've already said before. And, and I'm particularly concerned, which I don't think I really have said enough yet, that we don't have, we're about to have major redevelopment in those shopping centers when this resolves. There's going to be turnover, people are going to want to. There's going to be turnover, people are going to want to come in, they're going to want to hit the ground running. And right now, all we really have for development services is again, the city administrator. And, and I'm afraid things are falling through the cracks. And so I really want to, as we're talking about having impact services, also looking at somebody who can help coordinate this, you know, the development that's going to come up to us. So that those are, those are, as we look at things, at least a tech or two, a part-time public works supervision kind of person. And it's fine that it's a part-time, you know, engineer that we just do a few, we do a few hours a week with. But, but someone who is part of our staff was something that was strongly recommended by the public works committee. And, and someone who's going to be able to be on the ground to deal with the, all the permits that are going to be hitting us really soon. That's, that's, those are the things that I think that haven't really been discussed enough and, and how we, we look at that as we move forward in those benchmarks. Those were my attachments to this list, although I think the parking lot that you guys are talking about, I agree with everything that's been said on top of that. Okay, there's my two cents.
Councilmember Elliott.
Thank you. I, I want to state the obvious here, I think. When we say spend, for example, I think the example was given, we have three point, we think we're going to get 3.8 million in revenue, we get 4.2. We have 400K to spend. That spend could just be as easily 400K additional going into reserves, correct Sylvia?
Amen. Amen. I love that.
You know, that's the first thing. Second thing is we're talking about a COVID recovery plan. I don't see any signs of recovery right now. I think the best thing we can say, to quote Winston Churchill, is we're not at the beginning of the, we're not at the end, we're not at the beginning of the end. We may be at the end of the beginning. And I think we need to be very, very cautious to what the second way or the end of the first way could look like. That's the second. The, the third thing is I keep hearing this issue and I think we have addressed this in previous council meetings. If I'm wrong, I will admit I'm wrong. The issue is being brought up of concerns about floodplain administrator, the issue has been brought up about safety. And I think every time that was brought up, the city administrator gave me an explanation that left me satisfied. Now, if other council members are not satisfied with the explanation and the rationale that the city administrator be put behind that, then let's discuss that. But I think maybe on two occasions, if I'm not wrong, maybe three, and again, I will be more than happy to stand corrected on this, the issue came up about who is doing the floodplain administration, critical roles, water testing and so on. And I think we were given satisfactory answers. The, the next thing I will say, before we even think about adding people, I would like for us to explore every opportunity we have for using third-party contractor services. And for a very simple reason, we do not have to pay for equipment, we do not have to pay for retirement plans, we do not have to pay for health insurance, and if they don't perform, we can terminate them. And the final comment I make, which is the last time we had a high-paid public works director, we ended up with an $850,000 pond that doesn't work, we have drainage issues in the parking lot, we have drainage issues on Jones Road, we had to give back $60,000 in mitigation fees that we shouldn't have collected in the first place. I would stress a high degree of caution before we run out and try and fill positions that may be significant positions, but need a tremendous amount of thought, a tremendous amount of job description put into there and a tremendous amount of vetting before those people are brought on. I think caution is the issue right now. I, I agree with Councilmember Rosengarten. Reserves are a beautiful thing and I don't think there's ever a case when you can sit back and say, we have too much reserves. Those are my comments.
Very nice with foot. I like that.
Thank you.
Karen, I see you have your hand up. I have all the council members, since we were trying to do a quick roundtable discussion, everybody has an open mic, you just need to mute yourselves when you're done speaking. And then I'll look to Councilmember Gonzalez and Medikus to sort of direct how they want this to wrap up, whether that's a motion of some sort or some sort of a direction of what you want to do next.
If I, if I could say a few things just really quickly in, in the whole scheme of budget and developments and where we are today as a city.
Please do.
So in terms of the public works department, so it's no secret to any of the staff here. When I arrived and began to talk about our need for generalists, it was very difficult for me as an administrator to understand the way we weighted pesticide licenses and the way we weighted class C water licenses. Understanding myself from an administrative background professionally trained, where our level of importance lies. It's also not a secret that the public works department was very siloed. It was very, very difficult to share staff. It was very difficult to do any of those things. There's a lot of internal conversation on that. In, in the longer term, do I believe we're, we need to rebuild the public works department? Yes, I believe that. I would like some thought, I would like some really methodical conversations on what it is we expect from our public works department. Because as an administrator, the way I see it right now is we have not really made a decision about what we expect as a resident group. We have a lot of push and pull among the committees and you see that within the programs and the services of what's an expectation and the standards by which Sunset Valley residents have become accustomed to that sometimes are not going to be necessarily sustainable. The, the use of third party in the short term, yes, absolutely. I don't think we're going to have a choice. And that includes floodplain administration, which by the way, is included in our engineering contract. But over, over the longer period of time, I think we're going to end up with a much stronger workforce, we're going to end up with a much more resilient workforce and a workforce that is really a cohesive team and not necessarily as divisive and split as it was. I know there's not a lot of discussion about what was happening within public works other than within the walls of City Hall, but I will tell you that right now, you may only have a group of five staff members in there, but those are the happiest five that have been in public works for a little while. Yes, the work is overwhelming, but they're all open to the challenge and they're open to the cross-training and they're certainly open to the new environment that's been created here. I would love to add staff. I would love to add staff when we have the ability to do it. I think in the short term, we are looking at tech escapes, we are looking at temporary, we are looking at emergency labor pools as we need them in order to be able to have some of that resiliency and elasticity we need within the budget. But I, I would really just ask everybody to sort of take a, a deep breath. Let's really determine what is absolutely necessary, what we as a community have decided we're going to deliver and then work on delivering that the best way we know how. Because right now, I can't get agreement on whether we do curbside mulch or we let people come mulch or we still deliver mulch. Those, those are the conflicting messages I'm getting. When we get to finally develop the budget and everybody really sees what is able to be delivered and what things actually cost through a cost of service methodology, then I think we begin to talk about people coming back. Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. This is Karen. Let me just be clear. One thing I'd like to state is I am not interested in looking backwards. I'm interested in looking forward. And when I put the item on this list about wildfire mitigation and what safety items, health and safety items need to be addressed, I wasn't, I had no intention of how that was going to be dealt with. In my mind, we have to look at what are the needs, what has to be done, what are the important things to happen? And then we figure out how that happens, whether it be a contractor, whether it be staff, whatever. But I think it's important for us to identify the what first before we figure out anything about the who.
Exactly.
And so that's important. I wanted to say that because I've, I've heard a lot even tonight about what somebody else did, what somebody previously did. And I'm really not interested personally in going there. I want to look at what needs to happen, how do we get it done? We are where we are, we can't change that. We don't know what's going to happen with COVID. It's still in the first phase, as Phil said. And I think we need to really be very mindful of how we move forward based on the needs, not on the what we would love to have. So I just want to be clear about that. And I had a question. I think Sylvia, you said we do not, the city of Sunset Valley does not have a financial policy, is that correct?
We do have financial policies. What I was asking for early on when I arrived was a, basically an elasticity policy that required us to reduce expenses when revenues were, were reduced. So it's sort of an automatic that was monitored by both the council and the Budget and Finance Committee per se.
So at the very least, I think we need to, we need to look at that and update that policy so that we are, we do have that elasticity. And I, I would love to see us prioritize. I liked what Rudy said earlier about benchmarks. If, if we have this, then we do that, sort of like the bronze and the silver. I think we still need some direction from council about what gets prioritized. And I think it's important for us to understand all the benefits that we have been providing and what the real cost of that is to the city and make a decision as to which of those services are important for us to bring back or not, or charge for. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
And I'm actually going to mute everybody. We have one resident who wants to speak, Charles Goyette.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Hey, wonderful discussion on this item. And everybody basically kind of, you sound like you're all congealing on something here. I think, well Rudy, you started it off with expressing your desire to keep costs at their absolute minimum right now and not get tempted into spending money that, yeah, we have, but that we may need in the future. And, and Phil Elliott with his wonderful rendition, which I'd like to add, by the way, of Phil's latest newsletter, his July newsletter, talked about the budget with regard to expenses and the expense on a per resident basis and how that stacks up with other communities around, around us, including communities that are very small like ourselves. And I think that article is very enlightening and it, and it reflects upon our, you know, our very privileged position in this city. And, you know, and then Sylvia jumped in and she kind of took it from a different angle and she said a couple of things that I thought were really very important too. And it's the, for me, it's the cost of service fundamentally, the cost of service. What does that, you know, what is that? The services that we, that the city provides, what are their costs? And then, you know, coming up with that list, what, you know, what can the city afford? What do the residents want? And what are they willing to pay for? And, and, you know, when I first looked at this initiative, this, this, this agenda item, you know, it looked like yet another attempt to fatten our city back up, you know? I mean, to, you know, to provide services that I'm not even sure that we really miss, to be honest with you. I'm not, I'm not aware of how our infrastructure needs to be rebuilt. You know, to me, the city's looking meaner, it's looking leaner. And, you know, and I'm not seeing any change, any real change, any real change to the detriment. So anyway, I don't want to belabor this. You know, I'm encouraged with what all, what people said here. And, and I think we have a real opportunity, a real opportunity to improve our process. There's been a lot of talk about process. Melissa talks a lot about process. I think process is very important. I don't think we have a process when it comes to budgets and how we, how we run a budget. I'm not an accountant, so you know, that's a, a very non-professional perspective. But, but I think there's a lot we can do, there's a lot we can take advantage of this really crummy situation we have upon us. And, and somehow, you know, finding a, you know, I hate to get cliche here, but you know, a silver lining in this disaster? Anyway, good night, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item? Any additional council comment or direction? Councilmember Rosengarten and then also Councilmember Medikus and Gonzalez, you are all unmuted, so if you would just mute yourselves and take turns.
Okay, so one of the things I wanted to mention is we have our general financial guidelines, FP 103. If you, the effective date was May 21st, 2019. And one of the things that we in budget and finance adhere to is we maintain a general government fund balance equal to 100% of budget revenue for the preceding fiscal year. So this year, our revenue is not possible for us to project what we brought in last year. So we probably need to have this come back, FP 103, so that we as a council can adjust that policy. And that's on line 5253 of FP 103. Because there's no way we can do what it says. So we need to put that on the, on our future agenda before the budget is finalized.
Okay, Rudy, I will add that. I also received the other two emails that you sent me. So I have three items that I'll be placing on, on upcoming agendas for you. And the elasticity policy. Councilmember Medikus, you referenced it and I know that, or I don't know, I believe that earlier this year, that was something that Councilmember Reitz was interested in sponsoring. Sylvia, how important would that be to you for us to get a policy of that sort in place before the next budget?
It, it would be awesome if we could get something drafted and adopted as part of the preamble of the budget.
Councilmember Reitz and Medikus, would you two co-sponsor that?
I'd be happy to. If Wanda will co-sponsor with me, since she's the head of finance or liaison to finance. Is she with us?
She is. She, yes, there you go, Councilmember Reitz, we can hear you now. But yourself muted again.
Okay.
How we can hear you.
Yes, I'd be very happy to sponsor that, co-sponsor that.
Thank you, Wanda.
So I think the things that I haven't heard, I think that Charles was, was correct that we, you know, we've come to some good discussion here tonight. The things that I haven't heard said and added to the list of things, it is potentially increasing our reserves. I mean, because we're talking about a floating lower number than where we hope to be probably at some point. And we're talking about extending our reserves. So even beyond what our other policy is. So that's one factor. We have been talking in budget meetings about a parking lot, which we haven't addressed tonight. And I think we should codify that if in fact, that's something that council's recommending, that we, we have a parking lot with benchmarks for how those things get used and that we, that we, that we tell budget and finance that that's a good idea, if we in fact think that's a good idea. And I'm just pulling things from our discussion. You know, I, I don't, I don't object to anything that was said tonight. But I, I mean, I have my priorities.
But I, I mean, I have my priorities of what I put in the parking lot, which may be different than other people's. But in terms of how this discussion is moving in a way, I think if we cover those things in our discussion, we will have captured the essence of our, of what we've done tonight.
Councilmember Roos, do we have anything else that you want in the way of very clear direction for things you want to see come back or things that you want to sponsor and have me place on future agendas? Councilmembers, you all have open mics, so you can mute and unmute yourselves at this point so that we can wrap up.
Well, I would like to encourage the Finance and Budget Committee to continue with the parking lot and potentially prioritize their thoughts on that.
Sylvia, is that you angry typing?
Oh, no, that's me, that's me, oh. Sorry, I didn't, I forgot.
Councilmember Medicus, you were saying that your hope would be that the Budget and Finance Committee in this Thursday and then in their final meeting, that they would continue with the idea of the parking lot? That that would be, in your opinion, that would be helpful for council and their ability to approve a budget that has the flexibility needed for next year?
Yes, I think that would be helpful. And if they can prioritize it, that would be helpful too, from their perspective, since we've had other committees prioritize things. That might be helpful also. I want to thank everyone for indulging in having a conversation. I think it's important for us to have these conversations so that we can figure out how far apart we are, how close we are. And I think a lot of, a lot of what we brought here together is cohesive. Thank you.
I agree, I appreciate everyone's conversation and indulgence. We really did want to hear what people had to say and we wanted Budget and Finance to hear that. And also the mayor, she puts together her budget so that she knows what our thinking is and it'll make the budget process a lot smoother. And that was certainly our hope as we were putting forth this agenda. Sylvia, was there something that you said you wanted that we didn't address in your list?
No, we've addressed the elasticity policy that truly, I hope, is in the preamble of the budget and every budget going forward, so that there is an expectation. And then I think the parking lot items, those will end up being an appendix to the budget at some point after the mayor prepares her budget and submits. So that again, everybody is really on the same page as to what had been discussed over the course of several, several weeks and we don't forget about those items.
Well, I think, do we need a motion for that to go forward or are we all good? If we need a motion, I'll make a motion that all of that gets sent to Finance and moved forward. If we need that motion, I'm happy to provide it.
Is this item a action item Sylvia?
It is.
Yes. So this is a, and Finance to develop the parking lot, the parking lot list and prioritize it, is that the motion?
Well, it's to, it's actually to take the complete list of what we did, refer whatever needs to go to Finance, because some of the policies will go to the city administrator to do. We made, we made a list of what we need to move forward and I think we captured the discussion in this list. And so I'm moving whatever needs to go forward to Budget and Finance and whatever needs to go forward to the city administrator of that list that we just enumerated forward, so that our discussion is allowed to be put into action.
The mayor got sponsors for those, for future council items. So the sponsors will move those through, I believe.
All right, so then all we need is the direction to Budget and Finance and I'm happy to provide that.
What is the, what is the motion?
That we have Budget and Finance. I think if there's any direction that we provided, that it's also provided to Budget and Finance so that they see our thinking and that they implement the parking lot and the prioritization of the parking lot in their benchmarks and develop their thinking about that and have them bring it back to us.
That's your motion.
Yes. Is that, is that, is that good? Wanda, do I leave anything out?
Can I talk?
Melissa, can you repeat that one more time? My mic is getting out.
Melissa, can you repeat your motion and then we need to get a second? And then yes, councilmember Elliott, then you can speak.
Okay, thank you.
So my motion is to hopefully capture the last bit, which is the parking lot and any direction that needs to go to Finance from our discussions, like this summation. And that we, that we have them work on their priorities in relation to that parking lot as well. That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
Yeah, there was one thing I would like to ask Sylvia to come back with. And I am a big believer in doing postmortems and learning from that so we can take it forward and make the next cycle better. And it's kind of, what I'd like to learn from, this is Sylvia's first budget at Sunset Valley. It is the first time that we've had a new accountant, Susanna, come on board. Maybe a quick summary from them that says, "Lessons learned" and things we could do differently going forward. I think it'd be a terrible shame not to capture that, that experience that, especially in a time like this, which was somewhat unique where we had the COVID-19 issue. I'd like to capture their experiences, what they've learned, what they would do differently and quite frankly, what they, you know, would like to see us help them with. I think, I don't want to lose that, what could be a very powerful learning lesson.
Councilmember Elliott, I'm happy to provide that with one caveat, please. An outgoing tenure who has absolutely nothing to lose anymore.
Right, right, I knew you'd say that. I think the more feedback, the more experience we can get, the better all of us can become educated and help the process going forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody, with one minute left, we came out of this with two agenda items that will move forward. And thank you, councilmember Rosen Garden, I got your email. So that's helpful that your three items you want to sponsor, you've emailed to me. That's very helpful. Councilmember Roos, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, Karen took it, it's Karen's, no problem.
Who's our second?
Our second.
A motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned at 9:59. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.